It is 5:30 and I will call this work session of the Burnsville City Council to order. For our work sessions, they're very informal and if the clerk would note that all city council members are present. And members of the public may attend in person if they like, or the public can also watch this meeting online on channel 16 or 859, or else they can join us online at burnsvillemn.gov/meetings. The public can also participate through Zoom by joining us at zoom.us/join. More information about our meeting background is on the webpage and in the council agenda packet. Our work sessions are very informal and we go directly to the items that we're going to be addressing this evening. So the first item this evening is the Economic Development Strategic Framework and Housing and Commercial Study. And our community development director, Jeff Thompson, is presenting and he also has a team that he's going to introduce. Mr. Thompson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and good evening. So first I will introduce our team here tonight. We have Tom Layton and Spencer Cox from Stantec, who are our consultants assisting us with this project, and they'll be walking through the presentation tonight. And of course, we have Beth Weber from our economic development team as well. So that's the team here tonight. Ultimately, what our goal here is to kick off our two studies that we're doing around economic development and housing in Burnsville.
You have five members of the Stantec team that has joined our team.
Correct.
Yeah, but we have two here this evening.
That's correct.
Good.
Two from a larger team within Stantec that's assisting us. I know last year, we talked with the council about the, our kind of playbook, leadership playbook items to deliver on the community vibrancy strategic priority of the council with kind of two studies, needs assessment and kind of inventory of our housing and commercial property infrastructure, and then also kind of a new process to our economic development strategic framework. And so last year, we went, end of last year, we went out for an RFP and selected Stantec to assist us in doing that. As I said, we're going to walk through kind of what our plan is for developing these two processes. We ultimately selected Stantec to help us with both, and I think you'll see some of the benefits of doing that is using a lot of the data that we'll be gathering in the infrastructure and assessment to help inform the economic development strategic framework. And our goal ultimately is really to use data, right? We'll do a deep dive onto our community and our businesses and our economy here to dive deep into data and then also kind of robust community engagement strategies to help inform what we see as those economic development priorities to focus on in the next five years. So that's what we're here to do tonight. I'll turn it over to Tom and Spencer to walk through our plan and certainly answer any questions that the council may have as we go.
But this is all very good because it informs our budget also. So very timely appropriate for all of this.
Sure.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, I'll start out, I'm here with my, as Jeff said, my close colleague Spencer Cox, and just really happy to be here today. I love the energy in the room. It feels like the brain trust is here and the commitment on the part of you all as elected officials and appointed officials are here. So just a real pleasure to be here with you.
No, before we continue.
Yes.
I think it might be very good for you to know who's around the table and who's in the audience because I believe that people in the audience are also. So I'm going to go to my left.
Michelle Collins, City Clerk.
Dan Gustafson, City Council.
Vince Workman, City Council.
Tanya Schwartz, Police Chief.
Jenny Rhodey, Deputy City Manager and CFO.
Bethany Brewer, Strategic Initiatives.
Beth Weber, Economic Development.
Spencer Cox, Stantec Consulting.
Mark Ray, Public Works Director.
Logan Vlach, City Engineer.
Jeff Thompson, Community Development Director.
Dan Keely, Burnsville City Council. Nice to meet you.
Kara Schultz, City Council.
Hugo Mcfee, Deputy City Manager.
Greg Lindberg, City Manager.
Elizabeth Kautz, Mayor, and then we're going to go to...
Erin Jordan, President of the Management, SEH.
Justin Anavas, with SEH.
Brian Luther, Hain Center.
Phoebe Gray, I'm with Chateau Place.
Andrew Chorley, Chateau Place.
Mary Jo Palaranta, with Chateau Place.
Dwayne Palaranta, with Chateau. Anne Moran, Chateau Place.
Well, thank you to our neighbors who are here because I know you all have been very interested in the parking around the area, so I'm glad you're here. Thank you. Okay, please proceed now. You know who's in the audience and what they're interested in.
Yes, it certainly is a brain trust. You can advance a slide. Oh, we got it here, thanks. So our team was really excited to see these requests for proposals. We, and I think we were selected to do this work not because of our enthusiasm, but for some other factors. One is that if you know some of the folks on this team, this is the same team that will be doing both of these studies. And we, I feel so fortunate to be working with this group. I think I probably will never work with a group that has this depth of experience and competence again. I just, we're very fortunate to have people with complementary skills, deep experience in areas of economics, development, market research, housing studies, fiscal impact analysis, so all of these analytical efforts to understand the built environment from an analytical and financial and economic perspective. So I think that was recognized as one factor, and a second factor is that a number of us have, are also familiar with Burnsville. So I, as we talked about, I was, had the privilege of working on your current comprehensive plan with the Heisington Kogler team as a subconsultant, focusing on the economic development aspects of that. Kristin Baldonado has had the privilege of doing zoning enforcement in your, in your city along the street. So I think it was recognized that, and of course, Stantec has a long history in supporting Burnsville before this generation of planners that you're seeing today. So for those reasons, we were selected and really happy to be working with you on this. I guess a third reason for our selection was that our skill sets encompass both project areas, and part of the efficiency of that is the analytical component that relates to understanding your economy, understanding your, the demographics of your community, understanding the built environment. Those are analytical components that inform both studies, so we have some efficiency in doing that, and that really frees us up to drill deeper, tee up more interesting strategies and ideas for you to pursue, so we're excited about that as well. I'm simply going to do a very high-level overview of these two studies, the timelines for the studies, and then we're going to give a really brief overview or really scratch the surface of some of the analytical work we've started to do, just as a way to start thinking about your economy in Burnsville. So that's, that's the handoff I'll make to Spencer. But in terms of the two studies, this is a little diagram that, that references how we think about the housing and commercial needs analysis. We want to understand that inventory of development product. We want to understand the population in Burnsville and in Burnsville's workforce. We want to understand the market indicators for different development products that, that indicate the dynamism or lack of dynamism of those products, housing, office, retail. And as we, as we think about those together, we are able to come to an idea about where are their gaps, where the inventory isn't meeting the needs of the community or the demand of the community. So there are mismatches, and there's a transition here where we understand, we identify those mismatches, we seek out what some of the opportunities are, what some of the challenges are, what, learn a little bit more about the needs, and on that basis, we can, we can develop a menu of strategies for, for achieving more housing development and commercial development that meets the genuine needs of the community. We have a timeline here for that process that starts, as you can see, with the inventory, with the analysis. It moves through the gap analysis, if you're moving to the right of the screen, and into strategies for consideration. And that's a very, a process that involves engagement with the stakeholders, including yourselves, when we think about those potential strategies, and then documentation of simply writing the plan. You'll see at the bottom of this diagram, there's an indication of how the steps of that process feed into the economic development strategic framework and inform that framework. So now we'll talk a little bit about the economic development strategic framework, and again, a diagram to just give a high level of idea. But the pattern is really very simple. There's a, there's a set of analytical approaches we take to really understand the basis of Burnsville's economy. What drives it? Where is it located? And we go through a contextualizing phase that is again about, okay, we have this information about the economy, where it's located, what drives it. How does that align with the needs of the community? What are we seeing as the opportunities of the community? What economic development programmatic or other activities is Burnsville already engaged with? What are some of our comparison cities doing that might be of interest? So that's, that's our contextualizing phase, and on that basis, then we again move into strategies. What are a set of strategies, some of which may be simple extensions of what we already do, some of which may be very innovative, that address these needs, that are opportunities that you're aware of, that you might consider adopting and moving in the direction of? So we have a timeline for this as well. I think it's kind of illegible, but in the upper left, it, it again shows an analytical phase, and it's colored to talk about the, you know, the efficiencies that we have for doing that for both of the phases. And the pink, I believe, aligns more or less with developing strategies and moves into developing the document. There's a, there's a broad set of engagement activities that go along with this. We will come back to you for, with a deeper set of information when we're through with our analytical phase for discussion about that. We will come back to you with a set of candidate strategies when we are at that stage to discuss with you about that. And so there will be opportunity for you to engage with those, with those materials at a couple of additional stages in the process. And I think that's, that's the overview I wanted to provide you of the two studies. And at this point, we're going to, as I said, scratch the surface a little bit. Spencer is already, is our, is our lead researcher. He has produced like 80 slides of charts and graphs that depict different aspects of your local economy. We're not going to do 80 slides today, but he's going to talk you through some of the things that really frame the economic basis of your economy.
Okay, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, yeah, thanks for gathering here today. It's really a pleasure to be here and a pleasure to do this study. So a little background on me, I've finished a PhD a couple of years ago at the University of Minnesota in the Geography Department, and my research focus and specialty was in economics, urban economics and urban development. So to be able to do a study like this is actually a real pleasure for me because it takes some of my real, you know, academic analytical passions and combines it with some of my technical skills as a data scientist, so being able to pull large amounts of data and try to make sense of it and tell an analytical story that helps tell a story about a place and connect some of the broader economic trends that we're seeing in the nation, understanding how that then funnels into economic and job growth within the metropolitan area, looking at Burnsville in the context of how the metro has been growing in the last couple of years, and understand then how that feeds into the demographic changes that we're seeing in the community. And from there, funnel then to looking at how it impacts the built environment. So how is it impacting demand for housing, rental or ownership, senior or affordable? How's it impacting demand in office and retail or in industrial uses? And from there, you get a really strong understanding to understand what those trends are and as Tom said, to identify those broader gaps. So analytically, there's a lot on this slide, but one of the ways that we really like to think of things is to understand how economic growth has really changed since, you know, globalization and deindustrialization in a lot of places. And in most regional areas, growth that used to be driven by manufacturing jobs that used to be really central to urban development has kind of shifted to professional services and development, management of large corporations, and knowledge-based enterprises that are very central to what we call the new economy. So these new economy jobs are very crucial because they're tradable goods. You don't really think of knowledge work as being a tradable good, but essentially, we're creating management products or creating knowledge professional services that, you know, are being traded across international, national, regional borders, and are a major center of economic growth and the major driver of the Twin Cities economy. But there's also aspects of thinking about kind of blue-collar jobs, and that's kind of a, trying to think about like construction and manufacturing as also being very important to a regional economy, especially important to an economy like the Twin Cities. So manufacturing still maintains a very central role because they're really strong middle-income jobs and tradable goods that create the effective demand. So the, the money that's created from tradable goods sectors creates the money that then drives job growth and services, right? So your medical health services, your retail services are all a function of the tradable goods that you're creating in your broader economy. It also impacts the demand, right, for retail space, for office space, for industrial space. So we use these broad categories of new economy, high-wage jobs, right? Those are really knowledge-based jobs that are central to economic growth, kind of blue-collar jobs, and then the effective demand that creates kind of new economy, low-wage jobs. And we use that term low wage in the sector because a lot of the services industries in general have grown in employment substantially since the early 2000s. And they do that because it's really hard to automate and increase the productivity in a lot of service sector-related jobs, right? So if you're working in food industry, or you're working in elderly care, nursing care, those are jobs that have been difficult to increase the labor productivity. So as the demand for those services increases, it increases the total amount of jobs that are required to fulfill those job roles. So there's been an increase in those roles as a proportion overall in the economy because it requires labor to fulfill that rather than kind of more effective labor substitution for machines. The second aspect is Eds, Mets and Gov, right? That's another aspect of the service sector-related job, education, medical services and government services that tend to be middle-income jobs. And if you think about Burnsville in terms of economic growth, it's situated kind of within Dakota County and the broader metro area. And the broader, in Dakota County, the largest driver of economic growth maintains and continues to be manufacturing as a sector. So manufacturing continues to be the largest segment of GDP growth within the area, which is followed second by real estate services. So real estate services, the buying and selling of real estate continues to be a major source of GDP growth. But if we look at trend data of which parts of the economy are actually increasing in terms of overall share, those kind of new economy, high-wage jobs, those kind of service sector, tradable knowledge goods jobs have been growing at a faster rate of total GDP creation within the Dakota County, whereas blue-collar jobs have actually been having a more difficult time as a result of deindustrialization and in particular China entering the, you know, WTO in 2000 and the offshoring and relocation of those jobs. Nonetheless, manufacturing's still about 20% of overall GDP within the Burnsville area. So if you look at these two graphs here, what we're actually looking at is job and industrial category growth based on those different sectors. And it uses a nifty tool called locational quotients, and it's hard to see, I think, in the distance in, in terms of locational quotients work, but how locational quotients work is that they look at the ratio of jobs in your community versus the ratio of jobs in the broader metro. For a higher locational quotient, that means you have a higher proportion of those jobs, whereas if it's a lower locational quotient, that means a lower proportion. And generally, what we've seen in terms of overall trends is that Burnsville has a higher proportion of blue-collar manufacturing jobs and kind of new economy, low-wage jobs than exist in the broader metro. And this kind of makes sense, right? Burnsville's kind of this gateway community that has a retail hub and retail center for the broader southern metro and even into southern Minnesota, so it's kind of a gateway location for, in particular, wholesale. So a lot of retail might be shifting over to the Mall of America or other malls, but wholesaling still remains a major aspect of the local regional economy here and is a major gateway job creator. And it's also a center for, for medical services. So people that are entering from southern Minnesota also come into Burnsville around the regional hospital and the growing medical services that are around there. Importantly though, manufacturing maintains and continues to be a large part of this regional economy, largely in like smaller machine shops and nut bolt manufacturing, but also bicycles and miscellaneous manufacturing, and the industrial parks that continue to have really high occupancy rates continue to produce really high-quality, higher-income jobs.
I mean, the overrepresentation of blue-collar jobs that's shown here is really, you know, reflecting your South Cross Industrial Park and your Cliff Road Industrial Park, and that's a, that's a fixed, a long-term durable job base for Burnsville.
Our Tiff 1 and 2 area.
Yeah.
And if you look at these, these charts a little bit, they're kind of fun with locational quotients because this is a 20-year time period trend. And if the trends are going up, that means as those jobs are growing, they're growing in proportion here. So there's more clustering activity that's happening here, so they're growing faster in proportion within this area than they are in the broader metro, whereas if you look at new economy, high-wage jobs, that's actually been going down in the last 20 years. So as those jobs get added in the broader metro, they're getting added elsewhere rather than in Burnsville. So there's kind of been a shift towards a higher proportion of manufacturing jobs and kind of retail jobs, pretty consistent, education, medical services and government, but declining share in particular of those kind of higher-wage managerial professional jobs. So this is looking at residents, so in general, where there's been job growth within the community, the amount of people employed in the community has actually decreased as the community ages. Where people are employed in the larger economy, there's been a movement away of people that work in those higher service-based jobs, but an increase in particular in those middle-income communities. When it comes down to it, Burnsville's really a strong middle-income community that has a pretty balanced income distribution, so not too high on the lows, not too high on the highs, but instead is a really strong middle-class community that offers the housing types that are important for that, but also has a pretty strong workforce segments of people that work in really essential service sector jobs, also live in this area because they're able to find some affordable housing and some of the older multifamily stock that exists in the community. But in general, that proportion of people has remained pretty consistent. So in general, Burnsville, yeah.
Can I get back to the last slide?
Sure.
That dip in 2016, is there an explanation for that across the board?
No, it's a good question. I can look into, to some of that. Sometimes it's a weird data blitch.
Yeah, blitch.
Yeah.
Can you go back one more side?
Of course.
How does Burnsville compare to our south-of-the-river region? I know you compared us to the total metro, or I'm sorry, total Dakota County, just specifically like, you know, Burnsville, Apple Valley, Eagan, Savage, Lakeville, you know, our little regional south metro area that doesn't go further east or further south or whatever. Is this blue-collar growth an anomaly compared to other cities, neighboring cities, as well as Dakota County?
That's a good question. So the comparisons here, right, are looking at the situation at the broader metro, but I think I'd have to dig deeper into looking specifically at those communities. We do some comparisons, looking at Bloomington, Eagan, Brooklyn Park, Eagan, I already said Egan, and one other community, I can't remember which one, but it's largely on the demographics rather than the economic composition.
Right.
But I think I can, I can dig deeper into that. But one of the things that I think is interesting is that a lot of the manufacturing jobs, in particular, have been moving out of just the metro area down even to like Owatonna, right, Faribault. So there's been an expansion of those manufacturing jobs, like air conditioning manufacturing, right? That used to be a metro job is now largely located down south of the Twin Cities entirely. So there's kind of a movement of those jobs out and like a really strong strategic focus on medical services and on those kind of high-wage knowledge jobs, whereas kind of the, the manufacturing sector besides our really, you know, highly profitable, highly important medical services or medical device industry. But kind of like the mid-tier manufacturers, they're still a crucial part of the economy, have kind of fell out of strategic priority for a little while.
Sure. Maybe the same question for the new, new economy, high wage. I'm just curious if, if our neighboring cities, because I kind of look at south metro as its own little region, are experiencing a similar type of graph, or again, are we really sort of an island when it comes to losing that new, new economy, high wage and growing the blue collar?
So like, this here is looking at Dakota County, so if you look at Dakota County's overall proportion, it's growing in terms of economic output, but in terms of job growth, I think we can, we can dig deeper into looking at how that's been happening across kind of the broader southern metro. But in general, what's happened or did start to happen with a lot of those kind of new economy, high-wage jobs is that for a while, there was a suburbanization of those jobs in the 2000s as they moved to kind of more suburban office parks.
Yeah.
But then there was a really strong effort, right, in the early 2000s too, to re-center a lot of those jobs downtown. And that was when a lot of cities were losing a tax base that was very important in the office economy and really wanted to revitalize downtown locations and attract those jobs back to downtown. But one thing that's, we did find, so thinking around the broader metro, is that that job growth has actually been really slow over the last five years. So there's actually been a decline in those kind of new economy, high-wage jobs in total job numbers across the broader metro, which was surprising to me because, you know, the economy's doing well in terms of overall employment numbers, but if you start to break it down sectorally, some of the most important sectors to the regional economy have actually not had very robust job growth at all and actually had declining job growth.
Councilmember Keely.
Hi.
What are the, if you were to list the neighboring cities that you think of as this community of cities?
Eagan, Apple Valley, Lakeville, Savage.
Say what?
Really, Eagan, Apple Valley, Lakeville and Savage. They're, they border us.
Yeah.
South of the river. I wouldn't go further east or west or south because you get into more rural areas and they're not really as much of a comparable, but.
Not Shakopee?
Yeah, like Shakopee is, they're, they're, they're different. They're like new, growing, I mean, they're like us 25 years ago.
Got it.
So, but you see, Eagan's pretty built out, Apple Valley's pretty built out, Lakeville
may not be a great comparison, but, but because they're neighboring.
It's the neighbors.
And when people are locating to live or jobs and that kind of stuff, you know, I kind of think of us as a little regional hub down here.
Yeah.
And that if, if we see that their numbers are similar to ours, okay, but if we're more of an island even compared to those, that's an interesting dynamic I'd like to be aware of, put that way.
Yeah.
And for Bloomington, you got to cross the river, and that's like, that's a thing.
Right.
They're their own island.
Especially if you're riding your bike. It's hard to find the bike crossings.
So Spencer, one of the things you said that caught my ear was that a lot of the manufacturing jobs are shifting south. Is that because that there's more land for bigger manufacturing? So one of the things that perhaps we need to take a look at when you're looking at all of this is, I would like to see, what do we have with regard to our commercial industrial park? How much do we have there? And how much we'll be losing each time we change a zoning on something like this? If we're losing some of our businesses to areas that have more land, and we're already built out.
Yeah, that's a great question. There's a couple of good questions that we'll be getting into as we get into the inventory, and this is why we would like to connect these kind of broader trends to the inventory question. But when we've looked at some of the initial inventory data in the industrial segment here, industrial in general has been doing extremely well within the broader Twin Cities and well here. Vacancy rates are low, and the major developments that have been happening regionally within the Twin Cities has been in largely transportation and distribution. So most of like the spec development that you see, like imagine heading 94 east, right, heading towards Wisconsin or out towards Maple Grove, a lot of those are spec warehouse and distribution spaces, and a lot of the square footage that's been added, 20% or something, has been Amazon alone.
Yeah.
And those transportation and distribution jobs require a reorganization of logistics and warehouse space that's really new based on how these labor processes work.
Yeah.
So it soaked up a lot of the new development that was happening in that industrial space, but a consequence of that is that some of the smaller industrial spaces like you guys have in your industrial park here, that's largely focused on kind of manufacturing and tend to be smaller spaces rather than these like 1.2 million square foot warehouses, are actually doing really well in the regional economy and demarcating. are actually doing really well in the regional economy and demand's really been strong for those.
Yeah, when you all are taking a look at that, Jeff Lark, the industrial park, Lark Industrial Park. And I want to find out, when you put all of that together, how much do we have in commercial industrial acreage that we have?
Absolutely. Yeah, before I add the inventory aspect, but relating also to manufacturing, a lot of that is greenfield development of where they can build new manufacturing facilities to spec. But there's also pretty large land savings that happened as you move out of the Twin Cities metropolitan area. But there's been some interesting trade-offs that have happened as that development has moved out of the Twin Cities, in particular in a very tight labor market. So, a lot of places that have relocated manufacturing to smaller towns have all of a sudden run into labor-market-related issues because there's not sufficient labor relative to the demands of, you know, growing industrial base. So, there's a trade-off that some manufacturers are facing. I think that there's kind of some relocation back to the metro and some of that.
So, as we go through this, I'd really, Jeff, would like to understand, how do we preserve that strength? If our strength is still in manufacturing? And that's where some, how do we preserve what we have?
Yes.
That's great.
Instead of losing what we have? Because, yeah.
I agree 100%. Yeah, it's a big part of what we've already been talking about and some of the issues that they've been facing in terms of requests for alternative uses or transition of uses away from industrial. Whereas these really are strong jobs and very important to the regional economy and are major, you know, aspects of continuing to have a growing and strong economy.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Just in general, trends, right? The proportion, Burnsville is part of the broader metro, right? People that live in Burnsville don't necessarily work in Burnsville and people that work in Burnsville don't necessarily live in Burnsville. I mean, you look at that overlap, right, of, you know, the 33,000 jobs, only about 4,000 people live and work within Burnsville. And over time, that's been slowly decreasing, not substantially or any kind of worrying amount. But in general, you do see more people employed in Burnsville that are living elsewhere. And if you look at the commuting data of who's commuting into Burnsville, they're doing so largely from surrounding Dakota County locations. Whereas there's also a kind of decrease of people that live in Burnsville and they're employed elsewhere. But that's because the amount of people that are employed in Burnsville have decreased over time as people ventured into retirement. But when people do and where they're commuting to is largely either into Minneapolis or into Bloomington are the two top commuting destinations, but also kind of major employment hubs of St. Paul and Bloomington and Eagan.
I just have a quick point of clarification. So, this is people that live here and are employed by Burnsville-based employers, not people working from home necessarily.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, yeah, this is probably a deeper than a quick overview than, you know. But here we are. And so, in general, right, it's a pretty diversified base. It is kind of this still, I think, wholesale-retail-medical-services-based that's kind of a gateway location, but also with a pretty strong manufacturing sector and also is still kind of robust professional services. So, in terms of what's left, it's kind of been management of corporations. But what has increased in proportion relative to the broader metro are professional services and consulting. And that's been an area of growth within the metro. In particular, as we've built a lot of multifamily across the entire metro area and built a lot of new industrial and commercial space. In general, there's been kind of a growth in construction-related jobs as well as the professional services and consulting engineering service firms that are related to that. And that proportion has also grown in Burnsville. So, it still has a pretty diversified base in that regard that are within watered office parks. But job growth in general has been largely in kind of some of those lower-wage service-based industries. So, those have been some of the fastest-growing segments. That's a consequence both of what I was saying earlier that in general, those are faster-growing job segments because they're lower labor productivity. So, it just increases in the total proportion of general employment. And in general, it's part of a regional economy. So, the people that live here are necessarily the same people that work here and vice versa. So, those are kind of some big takeaways. But this is kind of just an example of how we compare them. If you look at the broader slideshow, we really kind of do a pretty deep economic analysis that goes from these big subsectors to the smaller subsectors. But then what we really want to do is then connect that to a narrative of overall trends and demographics. And this is just looking at comparisons. So, these are the comparison cities that we do have or that we've been using for the demographics that we identified early on in the study. So, it's situated within broader Dakota County, within the metro, within the state, and then relative to Brooklyn Park, Bloomington, Coon Rapids, Eagan, and St. Louis Park. So, we look at trends across kind of the different population, ownership and tenure, amount of people that are housing cost burden. So, a broad range of demographic data that kind of connects these things. And this one, it kind of looks at some of the comparison cities. Burnsville was largely built out in the, you know, 1960s to 2000s. So, it wasn't a really earlier suburb like St. Louis Park or the Twin Cities that has a much older downtown core. But in general, it was really built out in that area. But it also shares some similarities with a place like Bloomington and like St. Louis Park, too, where a lot of the developed area has already been built out in Burnsville. And it's kind of re-switching strategies from kind of single-family or townhome developments that were very common in the 1980s and 1990s. The 2000s housing boom kind of missed Burnsville relative to other locations where it kind of hit other suburban areas where that growth in land area is more available. But instead, Burnsville is kind of like a lot of these communities that are starting in kind of suburban infill redevelopment. And starting to add, kind of like you are in the heart of the city here, kind of the multifamily development and the kind of apartment complexes and rental that are based on kind of reinvigorating downtown locations. And you're kind of similar in that regard to a place like Bloomington and different to a place like Coon Rapids that might have developed more during that 2000 to 2008 housing boom that hasn't necessarily moved towards kind of infill redevelopment model. So, we kind of go through and dig into those comparisons to kind of look at how Bloomington, so it's looking at, or sorry, looking at how Burnsville compares to these locations. And this is just a quick, a quick example to kind of connect those dots a little bit. So, in general, that's kind of our quick overview of some of our initially analytical work, but we're really excited to continue to dive deeper into this stuff and really connect the nitty-gritty of the economic development to the commercial inventory and housing inventory and looking at where those gaps and mismatches exist and think of good strategies.
Thank you. Any questions for Tom and Spencer?
Very thorough.
Huh?
Very thorough. I'm looking forward to your reports, though, on the inventory assets.
Well, I'm also looking forward to engagement work that you're going to be doing with our community. And I like the strategy that you have in place with regard to engaging our community in all of these efforts with regard to looking at a strategic plan. But I really would like for you all to make sure when you're engaging with our community that you're talking to our manufacturing group. And you'll find them all in Tiff 1 and 2 area. And then you'll find some at the Lark Industrial area. It's where they're mostly concentrated.
Great.
Because I want to understand, where are they today? Where are they going to be five years from now, 10 years from now? And do they think that they will continue to stay in Burnsville? Will we have the land or can they expand or?
That's great.
So, those are some of the things because it's important for us to preserve the land use that we have. So, it's balanced. Because when you look at jobs, it looks like a lot of our people are going elsewhere. But we have a lot of imports also that are working in our community.
You have an unusually diversified and strong local economy.
Yeah. So, the other thing, when I look at economic development, I'm always looking at transportation, housing, and jobs. So, I'm thinking with the great transit system we have, we're exporting a lot of people. So, what is it that we have that's not meeting their needs? And we're importing a lot and exporting a lot. And so, it'd be interesting to see all of those data points coming into play to help us, to inform us and to help us make good decisions for the future. We're going to be vibrant, boldly leading and welcoming to all. And just because we have something and we're not protecting it, then are we welcoming to our industrial base?
Yep. Those are great questions. Great guidance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Anybody?
Mayor, members of the council, I think it's just an important note to make for the community that this is really the starting point of some significant work as we really dig into the data and the benefit of the work that our consulting partners are going to be doing. Community engagement, mayor, to your comment, is incredibly important to us in this project. So, Jeff and Beth and our project partners are very much going to be focused on making sure that we're getting the community's input and the community's opinions count in this process. And I would just underscore the excitement around the demography and the information, the data that some of the inventory work will do to help to inform you as you ultimately determine the outcomes of economic development into the future defined by this framework. So, we're looking forward to having that conversation with you along the way as well.
Yeah, thank you. I'm excited about the work because every time we do this, good things happen because we have good information to make good decisions.
Yeah.
So, thank you, Jeff, for your leadership and for doing the work to select folks to help us. Thank you. Thank you, Beth, for everything that you do also. And I know that you're out meeting with some of these folks. Ask the same questions about, are they going to be growing? Are they going to stay? What can we do to keep them?
Absolutely.
Do I say that we're very lucky to be working with Jeff and Beth? They're both really fantastic and have been a really great partner in helping sharpen our analysis and really focus on the right questions and paths.
Okay.
We feel the same way.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, everyone. Now, we'll move to the next item on our agenda. And this is the Heart of the City and Multifamily Parking Study presentation. Logan Blassity, our engineer, will be also introducing his guests who are going to be helping us. And if they can come to the table, please, that would be wonderful. And our Public Works Director, Mark Ray, is also helping with all of this. So, thank you, team, for all of the work that you've done to bring us to this point. So, Mark and Logan, the floor is yours. And then you can introduce your guests.
Yes, thank you, mayor. So, this is the results of the parking studies that we did in both the Heart of the City and four case-study multifamily apartment complexes. So, with me, with us tonight are Erin and Justin with SEH. They were the consultants selected to actually perform the parking study. And I'll let them introduce themselves and give a little background on their work.
Sure. Well, I'll just introduce myself. Nice to see you all. I don't think I've attended a city council workshop here before, so I'm happy to be here. I'm Erin Jordan. I'm the project manager for the SEH team on this project. I have a background in traffic and transportation engineering as well as transportation planning. I have my engineering license and I've been working in the industry for about 10 years and communities really similar sizes to Burnsville have worked a lot in the city since joining SEH and moving here into the metro area four or five years ago now. And I've been really pleased to be a part of a lot of the work and progress that you are all making, especially from a multimodal and safety perspective. So, I'll let Justin introduce himself.
Hi, I'm Justin Anabis. My primary focus for this project was kind of the data collection and the analysis side on the parking side. Generally, I focus more on traffic operations and have done quite a bit of work around Burnsville and Dakota County with that kind of stuff. So, pretty familiar with the area. Been with SEH about seven years. Yeah.
Good, welcome.
Thank you. Do you want me to continue?
Yes.
All right. I can do that. All right. So, as Logan mentioned, we're here to give kind of the cap on this project, the Burnsville Heart of the City and multimodal family or multifamily housing parking study. It's kind of two similar but separate studies. As we dive into it, you'll kind of see how we separated them out for each of them. So, we'll go through a quick introduction and a schedule of what we did this past summer and this past fall with the studies. We'll review some of the community engagement that we partook in and a lot of the information and feedback that we received from the community during some pop-up events, especially at Party on the Plaza on a beautiful summer day, which I'm looking forward to having again. And then going through the data, Justin will jump in at that point. And then we'll start taking a look at some of the challenges that were identified through this study and some of the conversations that we had with folks. And then start identifying some of the potential parking management strategy recommendations that were identified through the discussions as well. And emphasizing the word potential here, this is really kind of the feedback that I want to get from you, just kind of identifying how many of these would be an option to move into more of a recommendation. So, we'll kind of offer a menu to you based on some of the challenges and opportunities that we're identifying with some of the strategy recommendations. And then we'll kind of talk about next steps as well. So, some of the project goals, as we dove in with the city and Logan here as we were looking at the parking study in particular is, we understood that back in 2022, so not that long ago, there was the Heart of the City public space guidelines. And as part of that guideline report, there was kind of an action item here to look more closely at the Heart of the City parking and dive into that from a data perspective. And we were lucky to be a part of that team as well. So, it was kind of a continuation of the work that our team had been supporting the city on, and it was nice to kind of be a part of it moving forward. So, looking to as well improve the parking experience in Heart of the City as well as within the multifamily housing locations around the city as well. Revisit some of the parking restriction discussions, understand some of the parking needs surrounding apartments. We did take a look at four case studies specifically, and we'll dive into that in a little bit as well. And then ultimately provide some actionable improvement recommendations and opportunities to help manage the parking demands in the city and be proactive in seeing where maybe some of the shifts in understanding or policies could really help shape some of the parking management and demand in the city, particularly in Heart of the City. So, taking a look at what we achieved through the study, through the whole study process here, phase one, I like to call it kind of happened in early summer 2023 where we did our heavy data collection. Justin will dive into that in a little bit more in detail in a few slides here. But we took a look at the utilization and the data that we collected and started processing that and started understanding what that's telling us. We began stakeholder engagement as well to help identify some of the raw issues and needs from the community that maybe as someone who doesn't know it as intimately can start understanding a little bit more through those conversations.
Did you do a lot of that engagement also with the neighborhood?
Yeah, so what we were able to do is we put out surveys and fires and some, I don't know, maybe some of you saw some of the QR codes in the downtown area on the sidewalks with our decals. So, you're able to kind of take the survey link and respond to that as well. And the four case studies that we looked at for apartments, oh, no, you're good.
Fire chief.
Fire chief. Fire chief.
He's already been busy putting out fires.
Oh, good, oh, my gosh. No, you're good. I thought maybe I pressed something. So, we did have four case studies for the multifamily housing that we'll look into, we'll chat about here in a little bit. And with those four locations, we surveyed them specifically, more one-on-one, gave property manager calls, requested to survey tenants. Of course, that was less successful, but we were able to get a few responses on that. So, we'll, I'll kind of dive into that, but that's how that played out with the scope of this study. So, yeah, so then kind of diving into July and August time period, phase two, we really started taking a look more closely at the community engagement. We did the online survey. We were able to attend in-person engagement discussions, especially with the pop-up event at Party on the Plaza, which was great and got a really decent amount of feedback there as well as those one-on-one property manager calls and tenant surveys that I mentioned as well. And this is where we also started taking a look at some of the analysis and requirements when it comes to parking utilization as well as demand. So, then phase three was this past fall. And this is when we really kind of started wrapping up a draft report. That is available now, and I can feel free to, I think maybe Logan has that available to share if anyone wants to look at that. It's still in draft form, very much looking for feedback and shaping that into a final report here for the city to use moving forward and then work session prep. So, I had to throw you guys in there as well. And then work session prep, so I had to throw you guys in there as well as part of this final stage of the project. So. So community engagement. I don't have Kristen Peterson. She's been on, she's on our team in SEH, and she is just a phenomenal and community engagement specialist. And she was able to work closely with the city for these, this phase of the project. We were able to have a specific project website, and that was what we guided the public to through every form of communication. So first, we had the Heart of the City parking engagement as kind of one separate tier, one bucket of this study, where we were able to obtain about 150 survey responses, which is pretty good. Like I mentioned, we attended the Party on the Plaza in the middle of July there on a beautiful summer day and was able to interact one-on-one with some of the folks who were there. You know, they didn't necessarily come for our discussions, which is also kind of nice because we get a little bit more of that diverse mix of folks to help provide feedback than, you know, setting up an open house and people are coming specifically for that conversation. It can help kind of have some more of the, you know, casual conversations that maybe wouldn't otherwise be heard. And then we had some direct business outreach that day as well. So stopping into Mediterranean Cruise, stopping into the Hare District. I went and talked with the Maven property manager at the time as well during that day in person. So that was really helpful, and we can talk more about those discussions a little bit, too. And then the multifamily housing engagement was a little different. What's that?
I don't see the engagement with our Ames Center.
Oh, so Brian actually was on our project management team. I, I'm glad you brought that up. That was a big.
Because, you know, I'm looking at what you have here, and it's a very important place. That deck was built to make sure that we have parking.
Yep, absolutely.
For the Ames Center and for the Mediterranean Cruise.
Yeah. Yep. So Brian.
Doing within the Heart of the City.
Yeah, absolutely. So we did engage the Ames Center. Brian Luther is here, and he was at the heart of our project management team meetings that we held. I don't know, semi-frequently, not necessarily every month, but at project milestones for the project. And he provided invaluable feedback and components to how we really dove into the data and some of the anecdotal information, too, as regards to parking in the downtown area for events and larger events. We did do data collection during a, what we call a typical event, something that maybe was just more, you know, come over on a Friday. It's a nice fun event at the Ames Center. And then we did a data collection during what we call a larger event, and that was for the dance competition, the national dance competition. Yes, I've heard. It's already been, we're already coming up on another year with that. So.
During your busy season with all the dance competitions.
Yes.
Yeah.
So we did data collection during those larger events, and we'll dive into that with Justin's data here shortly to summarize what we, what we learned through that process as well. So yeah, having the engagement with Ames Center was really great. And being able to kind of speak to some of the business owners as well was, was good feedback. So then the multifamily housing engagement, what we did there was a little different just because we had these four case studies. And the, the way that we chose the locations there was trying to get a, a mix of age and location and number of units and some of the concerns that we were hearing from discussions with the city. So we did set up another study webpage, or maybe it was the same, apologies. It probably was the same website, but had different links to different information. We had property manager phone surveys, like I mentioned, reached out to those folks who were able to answer our phone calls and then had the online tenant surveys. The Maven was the only property that we talked to that allowed us to provide tenant surveys, unfortunately. So we didn't get a great, you know, lessons learned, I suppose, but they weren't, they weren't allowing us to kind of get that information one-on-one from their tenants. But through those manager surveys, we did get a lot of intel and, and good feedback. So. And we'll get into that as well. So it's just a high-level summary of how we engage the community. The in-person.
You move on with that because we have residents here from Chateau Place.
Yep.
And they live around some really big multifamily structures.
Yep.
And our police chief is here. We hear from the neighborhood with regard to street parking and how all of that has impacted them and the traffic in that area. So did you do a reach out and engagement with that community? And that's not multi-housing. They're all single-family housing.
Yep. So we didn't specifically reach out to the single-family homes surrounding every multifamily house that we engaged with. So I believe they're close to the Neon Apartments, and we reached out to the Neon, got some good information from them. We do understand the concerns that some of the neighboring, uh, single-family homes and some of those residential areas do have in the area. And that kind of led into some of our recommendations and some of our strategies that we're putting forth towards the city for potential opportunities. So absolutely, yeah. But we didn't survey the whole city because there are quite a few multifamily homes in the city, and that would be a decent effort, I would say. So we tried to focus on pockets that we understood have, having concerns or maybe some hotspots of, of thoughts. So.
This is one pocket that we hear a great deal from. And so.
Exactly. And that's what we, that's what we heard as well.
Expect you to engage all single-family when they don't have, and they're, when they're not impacted by multi-housing parking.
Absolutely. Nope. And yeah, so we did get some good feedback and from kind of anecdotal information from the city. I believe they're hearing some of these thoughts and, and concerns expressed from those neighboring residential areas, too. So working with Walter and Logan on that has been really, really helpful. So. I am going to the eye doctor in a couple of weeks here, so this is a little challenging. I guess I did print it out, so that's why I did this. Here we go. So, um, so for the in-person community engagement, like I mentioned, we had a decent number of folks do the online survey. About 30 of them completed that survey at the Party on the Plaza. So we had about 120 visitors to our booth, which was really wonderful. A lot of kids even becoming engaged in some of the city planning. And it was just a really fun experience for me personally, and I think some of the community was just really happy to see an opportunity to talk about what they're seeing in Heart of the City and in some of the, some of the surrounding areas. So that was really great. I would say nearly all the visitors, and I say overall because, of course, there's a few folks, but it was really strong feedback that was positive in terms of parking experience in Heart of the City, and that was, that was noted. Most of the folks appreciated the free parking in the Heart of the City area as well. There were some concerns for and against possibly the overnight parking ordinance in place. So this is kind of a summary of the feedback that we heard. Like I said, it was a successful event and would really encourage a lot of your projects to be able to attend something like that in the summertime if it works with schedules. So we did find out that while we were doing our survey analysis, that most folks who park in Heart of the City specifically, most of them are parking or take about one to two minutes to find parking in the downtown area. There is a handful, about 11%, takes about two to five minutes or so. And once you start creeping up, I think we all know five minutes can start to feel like a really long time, especially when you want to go somewhere really quick or you know exactly when you're meeting someone, you're running behind. But overall, you know, a strong majority of the folks who took this survey said that they can find parking immediately or between one and two minutes, which was really nice to see. And then this next question here is asking folks during busy times, so like peak time, you know, there's maybe an event going on at the Ames Center, or maybe there's something going on in, in, in the Plaza there. What is your maximum acceptable walking distance from your parked spot to your destination? So this is with the context that maybe it's going to be a little bit busier than a middle of the day on a Tuesday. A strong majority of folks are saying that up to about three or five minutes is something that they would accept. About 9% or so that said that they would walk more than five, four blocks. But the majority of folks said something under four blocks is what they would, they would choose to walk at most during a, a busier time in Heart of the City area. So folks understand, you know, that's kind of the expectation in the area. Sometimes there's going to be a little bit of walking time involved with getting to your destination after you park. So some of the general survey comments, then, and again, these are not necessarily all from folks up at the pop-up at Party on the Plaza. These are surveys that were, that went out in newsletters and online and that were posted on the website for this project. Like I mentioned, most folks strongly approve of the free parking in Heart of the City. A lot of responses saying that parking is not, is an issue. Parking is great. I would say there's, there was a lot of pats on the back for the city when it came to parking management in Heart of the City. And a lot of strong opinions saying that it's been working well for them. There were some discussions about maybe some additional parking near some of the new development. And we'll talk about what Area A means here. This is, of course, kind of taken from a few other slides, slides that we presented on. But kind of west of the downtown area where some of the redevelopment is happening, a lot of comments, or I would say a handful of comments about improving maintenance and cleanliness and some of the safety concerns expressed in the parking structures, especially in the stairwells. There were, like I mentioned, comments for and against overnight parking ordinance. And then there were some concerns that were expressed, especially in regards to the Maven with residents parking in, in the deck. So. Okay. This is really hard to read now that I have it, so I apologize. But this is a summary, and I will fly through this. But it is a summary of the verbal surveys that we completed with the property managers for the multifamily housing engagement. So now we're kind of taking a little bit, we're pivoting a little bit to the multifamily housing discussion. We, with our case study, took a look at reviewing the, the requirements and the surveys with the Maven. So that's the only apartment that we looked at within Heart of the City as part of the study, the Neon, which is close to the folks over there. And then Stone Grove, let's see here, and 12501. I don't have all of the addresses, but when Justin goes through the data, we'll show where these are all located on a map, if you're unfamiliar. So with each of these apartments, we took a look at parking policies and a summary of our discussion. So for the most part, I'll kind of do the Maven first, and I'll work my way down and try to summarize this as best as I can. The Maven, like I mentioned, is within Heart of the City. There's about 140 underground spots that are assigned in their garage. There's about 20 surface lots. They don't allow park, they don't allow visitors to park in the surface lots. They instruct visitors to park in the, in the deck. They do charge for parking spaces per month and per space. They've lowered their rates, I believe, from about $70 a month to about $55 a month. And there's no vehicle limit. So someone could have 10 vehicles parking in there, and it's what they allow. I don't think that's the case, but they do, you know, they don't try to restrict it if that's, if that's something that someone desires. And conversations with them, like I said, that was in person on the day of the Party on the Plaza. Their surface lot is usually full. Their underground is only 30% occupied, more or less.
That's a problem.
So that is a really interesting detail and piece of information that I obtained as we were talking with them. Of course, tenants are not wanting to pay the extra fee for the underground parking that's associated with their already, you know, of their rental fee for the, for the apartment unit. So a lot of folks, from what I, from what I understand anecdotally from this conversation, is they're parking in the ramp instead. So of course, managers noted that. They're trying to figure out how to best manage that. I don't know if they're going to lower their rates. They did discuss that, but at the time of this discussion, they had just lowered their rates. So I think they're probably going to play that out and see where it goes. But I think this is a good piece of information to share, of course, something to think about and, and understand as we go forward with potential management strategies, if there's something that can be discussed here with your, with your group. So I'll pause there. I don't know if there's any.
Well, no, the reason why they only have 30% occupied in their underground parking is because their residents know that they can park in city parking spaces on the deck.
Exactly, yep.
And they don't have to pay for anything.
Yep.
And, Mayor, we need to.
That needs to be fixed.
A hundred percent agree. I think we need to ban overnight parking in that ramp. There's no reason for someone to come down there and use it for an overnight parking.
Yeah.
They don't live there. It's a parking deck for use of the citizens when they come down there to eat, go to the Ames Center, et cetera. It's not someone's personal parking garage.
And this is the reason why the Maven only has 30% occupied in their deck, in their underground parking.
We took away the incentive for them to do what every other apartment complex does.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
How do, how do we do that? The deck was proof of parking for that Maven to even be built. So they should be able to park there, I would assume, if that was.
It wasn't proof of parking for the Maven because.
It was not?
No.
I'm pretty sure it was.
The Maven came in after we, we sold, we sold that property to the Maven, and the deck was already built.
Well, I know the deck was already built, but a lot of people use that deck for proof of parking.
Mayor and Council, Jeff can certainly address that issue.
So Mayor and Council, I think in a couple of slides, we have more information on this. But in general, the Maven complied with the minimum parking requirement when that building was constructed. There is a, when.
When the building was constructed.
Yep. So when, that's when we, our minimum requirement for parking is established in our zoning code and established when a project is constructed. We ensure that there's adequate parking as part of the initial construction. We'll talk, I think, in future slides about reductions that we made in our ordinance to the minimum parking requirement and the TOD. And a outcome of the study is to go back and review those minimum parking requirements based on this experience to make sure that we're requiring the right number of stalls in development in Heart of the City to match, to match essentially what the demand is. It was, so that's kind of the quick background. On the Maven project, there was notes in the, in the, the report that there is public parking in the area to support overflow parking. But there was no commitment from the city's behalf that we are required to provide parking in our parking, in our public parking facilities to support their uses. Now, it was just acknowledged that there's public parking in the area for peak times and overflow visitor parking. But there's no formal agreement between us and the developer for any sort of surplus parking occurring on our property.
Exactly. That's how I remember it because it's, it's a shared parking model. That's all.
Well, I get it, but I mean, the perception was there's shared parking in the Heart of the City. So people expect that there's going to be shared parking in the Heart of the City.
Well, but the Maven is taking that and saying they can use it.
I understand there's a problem with the Maven and the rents they charge and why people don't want to pay it. I do get that. But there's still, when we tell people that you've got, we got overflow parking available in the Heart of the City, they come to expect that they should have that. We told them that, so.
Well, I think that's something that we're going to have to wrestle with. Kara?
I think we may not be wrestling with it when the legislature tells us that we cannot do minimum parking. So.
Well, I know, and this is the reason why I told our legislators that they can't dictate to us. We need local control on all of these things because every, every city is different. So.
Judging by last year, I don't think they particularly care. So I'm just throwing that out there.
No, I, I understand, Councilmember Schultz, I understand. But the thing is, if our voices aren't raised that there is a problem and that we need local control, then they'll do the things that they're doing, like they did last year and how it impacted us on a negative basis. But we're not solving that problem today. We're just understanding the problem.
Exactly.
And a solution is going to have to be found. So.
Perfect. Nope. And I will breeze through this real quick. So I know there's interest in the Neon, and the survey response that I got is that they're 100% occupied. Probably not a surprise based on, from what I'm hearing. And then Stone Grove is also fully occupied as well. Unfortunately, 12501 did not respond to 20 million phone calls and voicemails, but we did get some good responses from those three, three above. So. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Justin. He's going to fly through some of those.
Need to go back to the Neon.
Oh, yeah.
Because we have residents here who are interested in it. So with the Neon.
So I think, I, I think having Justin show some of the data, it'll kind of set the tone a little bit more with the Neon and the other parking data collection that we did for the multifamily housing. So I think having him share that and then having that discussion might be helpful, if that's okay.
Because it seems like they, they have 85 to 100% occupied daily. Is that their underground parking?
Yes, underground and surface. Yep.
So what you're saying is that they don't have enough parking for their residents or because their residents have two or three cars?
So they, so let me see here. So they allow folks to have two spaces per unit and increases in, you know, rates for that. They don't have enough parking for tenants. I don't know if that's because they have too many tenants or if they have too many cars, but I do know that it sounded like more people are in units, maybe three or four folks, depending on the living situation. And of course, that might be more than two vehicles per unit where that might be pushing it. So I don't know exactly how that's all functioning. I just know that they're at capacity. And that's a concern for, it sounds like both the surrounding residents as well as the property manager as well. So.
Okay.
We have some future slides with Neon as well. So this is just the property manager verbal conversation.
Yeah, so I'll go quick dive into some of the data. We'll start with the Maven, which is in the Heart of the City there, just north of the Ames Center. For those who may not be familiar, they have a pretty small private lot. It's got about 25 spaces, I believe, if not even less. It's pretty much full all the time. And as we've already discussed, that underground lot isn't very full. And based on our overnight counts, there could be up to 61 people parking in the bottom level of that parking deck that are apartment residents, because I, there's not a lot of other land uses in Heart that are apartment residents, because I, there's not a lot of other land uses in Heart of the City that would have people there at 5:00 AM, which is when we did our overnight counts.
Yeah.
For the 12-501 apartments, it's the one we weren't able to get in contact with, but based on our parking counts, they have plenty of excess surface lot parking. It's never more than 60% full on the four times that we collected data. The one interesting thing we found is there are still six to 13 people parking on Portland Avenue.
Yeah.
We were really hoping to get ahold of them to find out if.
And big semi trucks and their cabs.
Yep. Yeah, and we were really trying to get ahold of them to figure out, you know, is that visitors? Because you don't have enough visitor parking? Or is it because their apartment's kind of along the road? Or, or what that reasoning is, we don't know. But there's obviously excess parking onsite, so it's interesting that there's still people parking on the street, and that will become a trend here as we keep going. The Neon apartments, which seems to be the hot button topic for tonight, their private lot is pretty much full or very close to full during the times we collected. And then, you know, there's up to 15 vehicles that were parked on Grand Avenue and 145th, including overnight, which again, is not ideal. We're not exactly sure why they're parking over there.
It's not allowed from 2:00 to 5:00, and I know our officers, when they have time, will ticket them, but you know, they're very busy.
And then last would be Stone Grove, which again, there's plenty of excess parking within the site. But again, there's still people that are parking on Penn Avenue, which is on the east side of that building all the time. So again, we're not entirely sure if that's visitors' parking or if those are tenants who, for whatever reason, feel like the street is closer to where they live than the surface lots. We did review the city's parking policies, as well as the Institute of Transportation Engineers and Urban Land Institute, which are both documents that basically give recommendations on where to provide parking. In general, the city code is more conservative than all of those, so it, the city code would require more spaces than those would suggest you need. All of these buildings do meet the city code parking requirements, although again, that Neon has those parking issues where their, their site's full and there's people parking on the street. One thing of interest is that they do have a proof of parking from 2019, which would require the site to add 40 more, approximately 40 more spaces, should the, the city desire. Stop there if anyone has anything.
Parking that they can. I think we need to, to city manager and, and Jeff and Mark and Chief Schultz. It needs, if they have proof of parking and they're, we need to require them to put in a proof of parking so they're off the street.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, certainly Jeff can address that. We do have later slides that, that pose a question to the council about potentially addressing, if the council is interested in potentially addressing some of the identified issues in Neon, but I'll let Jeff address, address that more specifically.
Yes.
Yeah, Mayor and, and Council. So as, as the slide and the presenters noted, in this case, when the project, when it was called Rise on Grand when it was constructed, when that was built, we did include a condition in the approval that if the city has the discretion of requiring the installation of 41 additional parking stalls, it's our discretion to do that, and then they have a time period of when they would need to install that. So that is a tool that the council has and the city has, frankly, to require the installation of 41 additional parking stalls on the site. Certainly, it would be surface stalls to address the, the, frankly, the overflow parking we're seeing and the, the full parking lot that we're seeing on, on that property. So I think the slide noted there's seven to 15 cars that we observed on Grand Avenue. The 41 stalls would certainly provide the supply.
It'll get them off Grand.
Yep. So.
Make lives easier for the residents of Chateau Place.
The residents will be happy because they won't have to park on the street, because there'll be spaces for them. I think the 12-501, I've driven in there many times. It's interesting that there's available spaces and they're not using them.
Yeah, I think that's a question we kept coming back to, too, is, you know, there's spots in the lots. Why are people not parking in the lots?
And we can continue following up.
Are those spots there during those peak, you know, come home in the evening or whatever type of thing?
Yes.
Yes, we collected during, we talked, had quite a few conversations with the city to try and determine. We did overnight, which is, we don't send our people out there at like 2:00 in the morning, so it's like 5:00 AM. Hopefully, too many people don't leave before 5:00 AM. But then in, I believe with the apartments, we did a weekday, like PM peaks, of people home from work or wherever they were for the day. And then we also did a Saturday peak, so. Tried to capture a good, good representation of what's going on there throughout the week.
Okay.
It seems we may have forecasted a problem with Neon, because we, we've got this option that we must have agreed to only if it became a problem, and it's a problem.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
All right. Next, I'll kind of start diving into the Heart of the City parking study. Separated the area into four areas based kind of on land use, which we'll get into here in a minute. We looked at parking at three different times during an average weekday. We did do a weekend or Saturday evening, and then the Ames Center was very helpful, and they sent us a bunch of ticket or attendance information for their upcoming events. So we were able to capture a large Ames Center event, which was the Masquerade Nationals, which is described as their busiest and most hectic event of the year. So we wanted to see what was going on with that and got parking data during that, and then we did a typical Ames Center event, which was actually the highest ticketed event in June, because we were told it more closely matched some of their holiday type shows in December.
That was the postmodern jukebox.
Sold-out show.
Yep.
You also had some sold-out events in December. Am I correct?
Yeah, and that's why we did the postmodern jukebox. It was the only show, I think, that was sold out last June, or one of the only ones. And we wanted to capture that one as our typical event, because it sounds like in December they're all the closest show sold out, so.
Provides an accurate representation of the typical higher attendance shows that we have in our holiday timeframe, so.
Yeah, and the other thing is that when we have events, the Rotary, when they have their concert for caring or any of that, that's pretty well-attended.
Yeah. Brian, are you having any parking issues over there?
At Ames Center? You know, you know, looking at the data that was provided, it really, I, I think is a pretty fair representation between the two events, you know, looking at the dance competition for one of our busiest times, and then also with the sold-out concert, which we can relate to other times of the year for highly-attended shows. I mean, a sold-out concert's going to be the same, you know, 950 for June as it would be for December or any other time of the year. You know, the data really matches up when we look at some of the, the parking figures that we see in the deck during regular business times. That seems very typical. And just looking at the, the, the use and the percentage of use during these, the large event and the typical event, along with the HOC parking ramp in place, it's, it's a real solid, accurate representation of the, the parking and what we see. But overall, I mean, we don't have strong issues with parking. We'll have times when, we'll have maybe two sold-out events back-to-back on the same night, and we have a short timeframe.
And Lori Line was one of those.
Lori Line, Charlie Barons, sometimes with the Nutcracker and such.
Charles Baron is, yeah, a big one.
Yep, and, and I'll use Charlie Barons as, as an example, because we'd have three nights in a row, two sold-out shows. And so we would work with city staff and Burnsville PD to hire off-duty officers to help with traffic management during the shows. We knew there was going to be a challenge, and so we'd work there on it. You know, we, we communicate as well to Heart of the City businesses and with the city knows where our attendance levels are. And so we're able to adapt and work together, collaborate as needed.
And some of the people also use the ramp. So that's what people don't understand. The deck is on the north side. The ramp is on the south side.
Yep.
And, and so when those big events, and also in the summertime, when we have all of the party on a plaza and all of that, people also use the ramp.
Correct, correct. They do. And, you know, looking at the, the data collected with the numbers and the parking spots and, you know, go over and take a look and just see where, how things are full and if people are using it more than other areas. But it does get used, and I think these numbers are an accurate representation of that for the events, and.
So overall, parking's pretty good for you.
Yeah, yeah, it really, yeah. I don't have any problems. I mean, we have sufficient parking, and, you know, looking at one of the, the pie charts that was there from the, the data, from the community outreach and, you know, the, the time, or how long it takes from the time you find a spot to walk into the facility. And looking at those numbers, I mean, 10 minutes on the long end, you know, two minutes, really, we're, we're looking at it as an easy walk, and hopefully, it's not snowy or icy out. But, you know, the weather aside, it's, it's not hard to get in and out. And we don't get feedback from the patrons that there's a problem with it, and.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, Justin?
All right. I think Brian did a great job of covering some of the data I'm about to cover, but kind of quick, I guess, high level in the Heart of the City, areas A, C, and D, which were kind of more private lots, you know, Cub Foods, the private lots on the western side, those are all, there's plenty of parking, there's lots of excess parking most of the time. So we're not going to get too far into those. Within the Heart of the City area near the Ames Center, the biggest thing we found is, so obviously, we've talked about that Maven parking lot is almost always full. The Mediterranean Cruise parking lot, very, pretty small, especially for the size of the restaurant, that is also almost always full. And then when events happen, what we found is that the parking deck fills first, so on the north side of the Ames Center, and then the parking ramp starts to fill on the south side. We did find, as even in the largest event, there was at least 150 spaces still available in that ramp. So similar to what Brian said, not a major parking issue, just maybe an issue finding parking on that north side, if that's where you're looking for parking during those times.
You know what I've noticed, because I live in the area?
Yep.
That little parking lot across the street from the Mediterranean Cruise, it's hardly ever used. Only on events in the summertime do people use that, but I don't know why.
Which one are you talking about?
I mean, because they can, they can use the light and cross over, and it's.
You're talking about on the east side of Niccollet?
Yes.
The little public ramp there?
Yeah.
Or lot there.
Do we have any signage on that? I still can't remember.
Yeah, there's signs there that says it's public parking.
I was going to say, don't drive down the street and go free parking sign anywhere for that lot, so.
Well, it's not, it's public parking, it says.
I know, but I'm just saying, I don't necessarily know that.
Yeah.
That's what it is.
Or they probably think it, it, it's parking for the residents on the, who live in that area, but it isn't. It's public parking.
Mayor and Council, you, you'll see in just a few short slides that wayfinding is, I believe, the most important recommendation that's come out of this study. So I think it's a good question and an important part of the conversation.
Yeah, that, that'll help. Okay.
The one thing we did want to highlight with the Maven is that they do receive a 25% reduction in their parking requirement through the city code for being within that Heart of the City transit-oriented development. And they also receive an additional 20% reduction, which is applied because they are located within 500 feet of that Orange Line station. So they do have quite reduced parking, and all of that is reduced for surface lots, so they still have to have the one-to-one underground, which is the part they're not utilizing, as we've talked about, and then the surface lot is a little bit smaller. Pass it back to Erin here to get us some takeaways and some recommendations.
Yeah, we're in the home stretch here, so I really appreciate it. We got a few more slides here. Study takeaways. In general, Burnsville is doing a really great job with their parking management, I will say, compared to a lot of communities that we've, we've touched and have been involved with. There's not a significant capacity concern, but like Justin mentioned, there's maybe a, a demand or, you know, somewhat of a capacity concern in certain pockets, but as that might dissipate with some strategies that we'll go through, it'll definitely improve some of the management and perception of, of folks visiting the Heart of the City area. Lots of good positive feedback on walkability and bikability, especially in the Heart of the City. As I mentioned, there's some surplus areas with surplus parking in Heart of the City. Some of the transit-oriented development district in Heart of the City may impact some of the nearby public parking, or the use of the nearby public parking, especially if folks maybe take transit more frequently in the future. Kind of getting into the multifamily housing review, there are some units, as we talked about, exceeding the parking requir, or, sorry, multifamily housing units that, wait.
Yeah, they exceed our parking requirements.
Oh, sorry, thank you. I'm like rereading this, from the Neon and Maven, but there are some challenges here as we're experiencing, specifically Heart of the City-related, in the TOD zone, as well as some impacts to the residents surrounding multifamily housing locations, in particular the Neon. And then there were some parking complaints, as I mentioned, to some of the maintenance and security concerns. But as you mentioned, Madam Mayor, there are really complex and sometimes really unique challenges with the city of Burnsville parking, so none of the things that we're recommending are just, you know, boilerplate discussions that we bring to other communities. These are really specifically honing in on some of the things that we heard through this community as we go forward here, so.
Jeff, with the school district, because they have a lot of parking spaces on the Diamond Head property, both down and up, and, and I do know that when we have festivals and summer events, people use the parking in that area as well.
Yeah.
That's still a good relationship in terms of, with the school district and the use of parking spaces in that area? Because I think during this dense season, I think some people also use, because it's not that far, the, the lower-level parking at Diamond Head.
Yes. Yeah, Mayor and, and Council, yes, I think that parking in the, the school district is made it available when needed, if it doesn't conflict with their use of their building.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm glad you asked that question. That was, that lot definitely has some capacity and surplus for even some of the larger events that we're seeing. So having that agreement and arrangement is really helpful for balancing some of those demands for the events. So some of the parking challenges, first looking at Heart of the City, there's some challenges, oh, you want to keep going?
Yeah.
No, you're good.
It looks like. I'll just read through these quick. I think the, the bullet points are good, but just for anyone that maybe can't read this. So parking information, can't read it due to visibility, not lack of reading ability. Parking information and communication can be improved, so for instance, the Park and Ride Ramp Naming Convention might be misleading to some, some people that aren't familiar with the area. Of course, we have our divided opinions on overnight parking restrictions.
Because the ramp is called the Niccollet Parking Ramp, correct?
Oh, it's called the Park and Ride.
Park and Ride Ramp, yep. Would be what the signage on it says. Yep.
Yeah, I'm going to look at that sign again.
Sounds good.
Because I think you're right, if it says Park and Ride Ramp, that may deter some people.
Yep.
Does it say Heart of the City Parking Ramp?
Heart of the City Park and Ride is what the little concrete.
Signage?
Monument sign says, yes.
It also says that on the facade of the building as you enter the parking ramp, too, so.
So it doesn't say Heart of the City Parking Ramp?
Park and Ride Ramp is what it's.
So from what I.
Well, we better change that.
We got a federal grant that we got to build.
Yeah, that came from the MDTA, and that's the reason why it says Park and Ride, because it was a grant from the federal government that we had to, that was a partnership.
Yep. So again, I'll just breeze through these. So enforcement of overnight parking ordinance is a challenge. Future parking constraints during larger events is a challenge. Lack of supply information for our parking lots. Concern for cleanliness and safety in our public ramps is a challenge. Concern for long-term tenant or visitor parking for multifamily housing in our public lots and structures. And then lack of bicycle parking and mobility hubs for our multimodal travel that's adjacent to these areas. And then our multifamily housing challenges are a little simpler. Guest park, guest park on the street or other publicly available parking, like we noted, even if there might be surface lot spaces available. Unbundled parking fees, so parking spaces are not included in rent, right? That creates a challenge for, for parking. On-street semi-truck parking activity, we've noted that, and then our overnight parking restrictions is a challenge. And of course, transit use, it's, it mixes in with both of these areas, right? So it's a, it's a challenge to forecast the, the use of transit as we go forward.
I can tell you, the parking in the Orange Line parking area, I don't ever see a lot of cars there.
Like I said, difficult to forecast.
Yeah.
Apparently it is.
Yeah, there's a lot more parking over the MDTA, but not at the Orange Line parking.
All right, so we're on our last, last slide here, reviewing, as I mentioned, the potential parking management recommendations that we wanted to bring, bring to the council here as we're wrapping up this, this study and our report. So, let's see, I guess this is a little out of order here. So, ooh, that's fun, okay. Things have been tweaked, but we're good. So the first I want to mention is wayfinding. It's already been brought up as part of our discussion, which I think is great. It is an extremely valuable and fairly low-cost and impactful way of improving some of the parking demand and how we can kind of get people from a higher demand to a lower demand area and still allow them to get to their destination in a decent amount of time, within that two or three-minute walking time in particular. As we mentioned, maybe the Park and Ride Ramp is a discussion to, to bring forward eventually and see if there's a way that we can reword it, re-market it, and allow people a chance to not maybe get as confused. I know I've parked down there before, and even before the study, I wasn't sure if I could park in there, so even from a personal experience, that's what I, what I remember. Now I know, and I've parked there many times since then, and feel confident doing so without, you know, thinking I'm going to get a ticket or something like that. But that's one specific opportunity of improving wayfinding, but really just trying to shift the demand around and making sure that people have the experience surrounding the whole heart of the city, not just a bad experience on the north and a good experience on the south of the Ames Center in particular, but really improving that from, from a holistic district-wide perspective. The second one here is improving online parking information, and, and really just kind of, oh, let's see here, yeah, improving online parking information. So really having a kind of a one-stop shop for having information for, are there any detours we need to be aware of? Where are the parking ramps and decks located? Where are EV parking, EV parking locations and handicap stalls that people can be ready to access and know exactly where their destination is if they need those services? As well as maybe some other information that would be important, maybe some Ames Center information that can all be kind of together at the same, at the same location, like I mentioned, kind of a one-stop shop that a lot of communities are experimenting with to make that information easier and, and better to find, so. Number three here is to review transit-oriented district parking requirements. And this is specifically, you know, at least with the city's code right now, that we're taking a look at parking requirements that are within maybe five, about 500 feet of a transit, transit station. A lot of communities, as we did our study, have something a little bit broader, about a quarter mile or even a half mile from certain transit stations to apply those, those different factors, depending on what we're looking at. So that's something to consider, just a kind of key part of the city transit-oriented. I know right now, we're kind of coming off a pandemic, it's a very unique time to consider some of those demands and ridership levels, but in the future, hopefully something like that is a good, good thing to consider as the city's proactive in its management strategies. Another kind of consideration as we think about TOD parking requirements is also kind of bike parking, multimodal parking. Sometimes we kind of need to take a step back and think about how do we want people entering and exiting our downtown area? And if we want it to be a little bit more multimodal, allowing those parking ramps for bicycles as well is going to be really important, or what we call mobility hubs, to allow people those, those pockets to, to station and then walk to their destination as well, if they're not coming by motor vehicle. And then maybe limiting surface lots as well. As redevelopment occurs in the downtown area in the heart of the city, it's going to be increasingly important to start thinking about how you want to manage the parking requirements, especially as surface lots maybe go away or change, depending on how you see the use. I just learned a lot about your economy already coming to this meeting, and I think in tandem, a lot of these conversations can go, go together. And then improving parking ramp maintenance. I know it's easier said than done when enforcement is tricky, but, or when some of the maintenance personnel are low, but that's something that we kept hearing over and over again through our conversations with the public, and making those areas feeling safe and clean and accessible is going to be important moving forward as well. So Logan put a note here on the slide that staff is working with Waze and Google Maps to try to improve some of the communication for visitors accessing the area. From what I understand, sometimes depending on where they're putting in locations, they're bringing them different routes, and maybe there's a way that we can start kind of redistributing some of the entrance and access locations. I guess from a Google Maps perspective, a lot of visitors are coming, especially for events, so it's important to kind of allow folks who aren't familiar with the area, the points that we want them to access as best as we can, especially if we want them to start going to the Park and Ride Ramp, maybe rather than the, the deck. So I don't know if you have anything to add on that.
No, I just think, yeah, that's, that's one of the things that we're already working on that kind of touches on both one and two, so.
Absolutely. And though that's really effective, we've seen that be, be really successful for other communities as well. So with that, we're done, and I think a lot of this discussion has already happened, but I would love to, you know, open it up, depending on what your time available is. So thank you for having us, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Logan and Mark, what's the next steps? This is, this is your finding. Now, are you going to come back with some solutions to some of the problems that have been identified?
First, I think due to the correspondence that we've had with some of the residents on Chateau Lane already, I'll, I'll try to summarize, I believe they are advocating for us to use that proof of parking to require more surface stalls at the Neon, so that would be our first kind of action item, so to speak.
That's still hanging fruit, we can get that through?
Yes, exactly, that's something that...
There's an agreement that they have to do that? Okay, good.
Yep, exactly, so.
So Mayor and Council, if I may, if we can go back to the previous slide.
Yeah.
The study really has the, the four recommendations, just by, by way of summarizing. I believe two of these things are highly operational and frankly, items that staff are already working on. The first would be much like Waze and Google Maps. We have some work to do to improve online parking information, that real-time parking information, not only to help folks who are visiting Brian and his team in the Ames Center and, and enjoying that experience, but just in general, I think we can be doing a better job in that space. So staff's already working on that, as was mentioned. I also believe item number four is, is something that frankly just needs to happen. We heard a lot about the cleanliness of particularly the HOC deck, but also, but also the HOC parking ramp. We are already working on addressing those concerns. And in my own review of some of those experience, we have a ways to go. So staff's, staff's working on that already. I think there's two, maybe, go ahead, Mayor.
No, because your next steps are all operational. That's why I didn't go there. But for the Neon, we have a proof of parking that needs to come to us.
So Mayor, Members of the Council...
Or because it's already in the agreement, that just gets done, and it doesn't have to come back for, there's no amendment to the PUD because it's already a proof of parking agreement.
So Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, I'd be looking for policy direction from you, really on four items, and I will, I'll start with the first being, does the city council wish for staff to pursue execution under the development agreement of a solution to the proof of parking issue that has been identified with Neon? Clearly, that would require first your direction for us tonight, and then, and then some additional discussion. There would be some staff work that would need to happen before we brought that back to you. So perhaps that's the place we start.
Yeah.
Does the council wish to address the proof of parking issue related to the development agreement that we have with Neon?
Vince?
Yes, but if it was 40 additional spots?
Forty-one, forty-one.
Forty-one.
If this continues to be a problem after that lot is built, do we have a next step?
Well, because they only have so many units. I think right now, they have, they probably have, some, some units probably have three cars, because they are, they, they have two spaces per unit? Did you say that the PUD says that they get two spaces per unit?
There's not two spaces for the units right now.
It's max two spaces.
Yeah, max two spaces for surface.
What is it?
It was max two spaces per unit.
Max two spaces.
Yeah, that they can purchase, so.
Yeah, because underground and surface, plus proof of parking.
Yeah, but they don't have two spaces for all their apartments.
So Madam Mayor, Members of the Council...
Just Neon, we're talking, yeah, yeah.
I think Vince's question is a good one. It's certainly something that staff will, would take into consideration should the council direct us to, to go in this direction. So it's a, it's a question we can further vet and answer through the process. I would say that the data indicates that by executing on that requirement, that the city would be, by the data that we've collected through this study, addressing the problem that we're currently experiencing with on-street parking, at least by the counts of on-street parking in the area and through our operational experience through the police department in terms of responding to complaints or addressing enforcement issues related to, to parking in the area.
Yeah, because Justin, didn't your analysis say that there's usually around 15 cars that are parked?
Yeah, the max, we counted was 15, seven to 15.
Yeah, 15, so 41 should...
That's the hope.
Help to address the overflow that's on Grand Avenue.
Will, will the discussion include allowing overnight parking in that area?
Well, if it's their surface parking, that's theirs.
I mean, we're talking street.
On streets, I think that's something that has to be informed by also public safety, because we have never, and also Public Works.
I would love that, because I now have the studies to back up public safety on parking overnight, so I will welcome that discussion. I will, I will not be caught unawares on that one ever again.
Yeah, because the other is that Public Works would much rather have a, still have two to five because of snow removal.
Mayor and Council, there's a number of reasons why the, the current overnight restriction is, has impacts on operations. I think going back to city manager's comment, we really see this as a methodical process, working on wayfinding, improving our communication, and so we see this as kind of work in the process, and then absolutely, you know, if we want to just see how things go and, and address, mechanically work it and then address problems as we work the process.
Yeah, and I think when we do some of the fixes that are being provided now, I'd also like to hear from our two chiefs on all of that, and, but right now, we have, we're solving the Neon problem, which is... Bringing it back to execute the 41 proof of parking. Is that where you were going with that?
Well, the question I had originally asked Madam Mayor was, does the council wish to, to execute on the option in the development agreement?
I'll go, I'll just do, Vince?
Yes.
Kara?
Yeah, if we can roll overnight parking into that, I'm, I am game for that discussion.
Yeah, 41, we're just going to do the PUD agreement.
Neon, yes, and I, I want to point out, I'm glad that we put this provision in. We do this sometimes because there's indications that there may be a problem, but sometimes there's, there needs to be more proof.
Yeah.
So we're not forcing extra parking for no reason, look at the mall. But then you have circumstances like the light with the building of Costco at Burnhaven, and I believe it's McAndrews. We said that could cause a problem that indicated a need for a stoplight, so that was put into the agreement, but yet, all these years later, that's never been really triggered yet because of the traffic issues didn't turn out to be something that demanded it right away.
And the other thing is, because it's the county road, McAndrews is a county road, and we can't dictate that. We may have it, but...
Costco's got, we have it in our agreement that they would have to put that in and fund that if it triggered, you know, traffic triggered it. It didn't, right? So it was a good decision for us to say, let's, let's leave that to evidence. This one more than proved that it was needed.
Yeah.
So it's time to make that move.
Okay, so you have unanimous to proceed. I don't need to vote, but that's what you needed.
Yes, absolutely, Madam Mayor. A second issue that's been brought up here is, is does the council wish to direct staff to do additional research or study on, on overnight parking? I will say that certainly this information is related, but there would be both, a, a number of operational considerations along with probably the need to get some community input, so I'll be looking for the council's direction. I don't know that we can do both together, just as a matter of, of timing, but we certainly can bring the issue back. I'd just be looking for the council's direction on that issue.
I think making sure that we have our community input on this, because they're the ones who suffer through all of that. And then also having input from staff, from Public Works and from both police and fire. So bring that study back with community? No, you don't care, okay, you don't want to do that?
I'm sick of re-litigating things that are working just fine.
Okay. Dan?
Well, I'd, I'd be willing to talk about overnight parking in areas where we have lots of multi-unit housing. Not necessarily in all of our neighborhoods, but...
Yeah, we have areas where I, I think there's, and we have had a change in the past however many years of having more multifamily, so I think it, I think we should look at it again.
Okay.
Well, I was the council member who brought up overnight parking multiple times over the last 18 years. It's a little hard for me to go, nah, I don't want to do that again, because, you know, mine was based on seasonal overnight, you know, not in the wintertime, but in the summer. Having been the recipient of some tickets when my daughters had sleepovers, and I thought, does this really, you know, have to be this way? We have a system for notifying police, but not everybody knows that.
When you were in a residential area?
Yeah, when I was in a residential area, got a ticket, and I'm like, I just had some sleepover, cars in, in a, in a double cul-de-sac, so why did I get a ticket? So the logic that other cities around us, like Lakeville, that have on-street parking allowed in the, you know, spring, summer, fall, but not in the winter for plowing reasons, I thought was commonsensical and a good solution, but I've been unsuccessful in, I don't know, four, maybe five attempts over the last 18 years. So I think, yeah, I would support having that discussion again.
I would like, I would like citizen input on all of that.
Give me credit, Dan, you don't give up.
Yeah, no. But we, but we, what we need is to have citizen input, because they're impacted. We can sit here and talk all about it, but they're the ones who are impacted where they live. The neighborhoods are impacted. Well, Vince, it appears that...
I get more calls about cars parked on the street than not, and let's say we did make a change, we're going to get more calls about, there's too many cars in front of my house, why are there's cars in front of my house? And so...
And I see the chief nodding her head because...
You know, it's just oral...
No, you're right.
You get calls because it's not allowed.
We'll get more if it is allowed.
Okay.
I'm wondering if that, if the discussion about, like, in the areas where there's not single-family houses so much, but that there's more high-density housing to...
Well, what we, there's three people who want to have it.
Just for clarity purposes, Mayor, absolutely, I'm hearing three council members who are interested in talking about our overnight parking restrictions. I also heard some caveats added to the discussion, and just for clarity in terms of staff direction, because it will have a significant impact on the scope of this work for staff. I, I did hear the suggestion in, in multifamily areas only.
I'm good with that. Are you?
No, I made the suggestion.
Yeah, I'm good with that, are you good with that?
Hello, there are neighbors right here who live by multifamily, and they are nodding their heads, they, so I want to hear from our residents who live close to multifamily.
And it could be specifically to the heart of the city TOD area, too. I mean, that's pretty heavy.
So I'm hearing some agreement about multifamily areas, which I think is, is related certainly to the study that we've talked about tonight. I also heard a suggestion of, of not during the winter or the plowing months. Is that something that the council wishes to establish now, or?
Let's leave that till we hear the operational information.
I want to, I want to hear from our staff, I don't want to make decisions.
That may let us know one way or another what the challenges are.
We're not making any decisions, we're putting the framework of what staff needs to bring something back.
Yeah.
I'm going to, I'm going to recognize one of our residents. You want to just stand and give us your name and address, and then you can give us your information?
Dan Moran, M-O-R-A-N, 14509 Chateau Place, Chateau Lane.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you. My question is, in regard to what we'll call Neon parking and safety, has there been or will there be any action items taken tonight?
Yeah, we, well, all we're doing is that, we, we did say that they, on the PUD, they have 41 parking spaces that is proof of parking, and so it's... And so it's going to come back for us to vote on that and to execute that particular portion of the agreement.
Not only the parking that's an issue. Cars coming from South Cross up Grand. Speed. Needs to be some type of signage or topes, if you know what a tope is.
Yeah, so we'll, tonight we're dealing with executing the proof of parking. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, to your point, certainly, I was just in a police briefing where this area was a topic of conversation for directed patrol. Obviously, we're hearing the concern now. The chiefs here will make sure that we continue to to address those concerns in the area as well.
And I want to hear when we do this overnight parking, I want to hear from our staff. They're the ones who are dealing with the problem and also from our residents because they're impacted and we get those phone calls and we get those emails.
Madam Mayor, I just want to respond to Mr. Moran's comments because I'll echo our city manager's mission statement to create great experiences for our citizens and we listen to our citizens. We did hear you and it will, it is already being talked about for PD to bring some extra patrol enforcement in that area. We have that speeding problem in a lot of areas. I live on Traveler's Trail and it's a drag strip every single day. And it's, I just got some emails and a voicemail came in from someone who lives just down the street from me and saying the same thing, that they've been hit once and they've been in the last week, they were almost hit, I don't know, two or three times of people running stop signs and blowing through intersections and just, it's been a problem ever since COVID, to be honest with you, around the entire country. Drag racing, speeding, running stop signs, it's like people just don't feel like they have to respect the law. So our PD is out in force. We're emboldening and growing that PD strength over the next few years to be able to get this kind of, this type of stuff under control as much as we humanly possibly can.
Yeah.
Councilmember Key, you will make sure that we also talk about the Traveler's Trail.
All of that is going to be, so the lady, the blond-haired had her hand up first.
Yeah, well, we're both from Chateau Place.
Yeah, your name and address for the record.
14513 Chateau Lane.
A name?
Phoebe Gray.
Phoebe Gray.
And I mean, this is great about the lot. I just was wondering, how long does that actually take? Are we, years and what we can do until that lot is built?
Is built.
Because it's such a safety concern for not only our two entrances and exits, but for Havenwood as well, that has a lot of sometimes emergency vehicles.
Yeah.
We have semis, we have, gosh, what other utility vehicles are there?
Work trucks coming.
Yeah, lots of work trucks.
Sure.
There's a lot of young adults living at NEON in large, you know, probably three to four to a unit.
They all have a car.
I've been flicked off by them, you know, that it's just, it's just kind of a parking mess and they were parking on the street and I was just trying to pull into my home, into my road, my private road that we pay for. So the frustration from all of us is is mostly safety. We have a lot of older adults entering and exiting our home area.
Because you have a senior living also just just to the north.
Yes, we also have a resident who still owns his home on Chateau Lane that lives at Havenwood and goes back and forth in his scooter, which is a concern.
I've seen that.
So great that you guys have that in place for the drive, the new parking lots, but what can we expect for safety-wise until then, until that's
Okay, I'm going to look to our city manager and you're going to be doing something with staff to look at safety in that area?
Yes.
Without police chief and fire chief?
Mayor, members of the council, certainly we care about the experience in the area and safety in the area. I'll talk to Tanya following, following this meeting and we'll make sure that the police department is well aware of the concerns and that we're directing patrol as Tanya deems appropriate in terms of immediate response. I'm going to put our community development director on the spot. I think he already knows it's coming. The question on timing of executing on that development agreement is a good one. I have no idea, so I'm going to see if Jeff can provide any context in terms of that process and the time it might take.
Jeff?
Yeah. Excuse me, Mayor and council. Certainly with the council's direction tonight, and we will bring that back for you, we will certainly put a timeframe of our expectation of when that will need to be done, being reasonable to understanding construction seasons and just design and constructing a project. My quick take is that that's something we would expect yet this year to be constructed on that site.
Okay.
And with that, Mayor, members of the council, I would suggest that we just, it appears that there's unanimous agreement among the council. I would just suggest that we bring that back in as efficient of a manner as possible to you.
I think that's
I don't know that it necessitates another work session discussion.
No, it doesn't because it's already in the development agreement.
We will make that happen as efficiently as possible in terms of the time it might be.
We don't need it. It's in a development agreement.
I just have a thank you to give.
Name, name and address for the record.
Yes, for the record. My name is Mary Jo Caloranta. I live at 14500 Chateau Lane and a big thank you to Walter in engineering who has lived with me for two years. Walter, it's me again. And Captain Tanya, you're 911, that's why I'm supposed to call. You call 911.
Yeah, yeah.
So it kind of got to the point of, it's me. They're here again. So I just wanted to leave it on, this is a good positive message that we can bring home.
Yeah.
And I just want to thank you for the services you provided us. And today was a big day on Chateau Lane, man, a fire.
Yes.
And she's been promoted to chief recently.
That's where the chief was. Chief, our fire chief.
I'm sorry. Even better. And fire was there and they responded, but I'm going to tell you, if it had been a weekend, they would have had a heck of a time because one car was parked about four cars back. But they had to maneuver the fire trucks and everything, so.
Yeah.
It, no, I'm done. I'm done. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mary Jo. It's good.
For sure.
Yes.
Dwayne Caloranta, 14500 Chateau Lane. In order to get an understanding, it's not, I mean, parking is a problem because it makes it dangerous for us coming out. It's on a curve.
Yeah.
You know, it's not a straight street, so you can't see around a curve with all these cars parked.
Yeah.
The other thing is, there's a no parking sign right by NEON. There's another one a block up from us, but none in the middle. Now, my solution would be, yeah, you know what? No parking signs right there.
Yeah.
But I, you know, the people speeding and whether they're speeding or not, you just can't see around a curve with all the cars parked.
Yeah.
So it makes it dangerous.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for being engaged and also and and Mary Jo for utilizing 9111 because do that.
Yeah, I know, they're there again. I can't, I broke my heart because I grew up in Austria, don't call 911.
Yeah.
So I'm always, it's me again that I want to call, but their cars are off there.
Yeah.
A couple of things, Mayor.
Very kind to me. I appreciate it.
A couple of things, Mayor and council. Thank you both for your comments. I will also have staff in our traffic committee take a look at the no parking signage in the area in the interim, just so we can take a look and we'll do a site visit and we have a great team who deals with those traffic concerns, so we'll make sure that happens as well. I also think that it's an opportunity for a shameless plug that there is nothing wrong with calling 911 when you have a safety concern.
And you see both chiefs are nodding their head.
I don't mean, I don't mean to make an example out of you, but thank you very much because it is.
Yes, I need to hear it.
I grew up and you didn't call 911 unless, you know, something terrible was happening, right? So it really is an important message for us, certainly with our partners with Dakota 911 and for our police and fire staff. There is never anything wrong with dialing 911. It is our mechanism with our partners to make sure that we get an immediate response from a public safety perspective, traffic concerns, parking, whatever it might be. So thank you for doing that and it gives us a good opportunity to remind the community to do the same.
Okay.
Thank you.
Number two, we're going to, that's
So Mayor, I have, I have direction then to bring staff study back for a work session conversation on our overnight parking regulations with the one caveat that we're looking at at multifamily sites that will help us narrow the staff resource to focus the conversation a bit, so I really appreciate that.
Yeah, and also if there's single family close to the multi-housing, we need to
We'll define that and put a scope together and I'll talk with you all a little bit more about setting those expectations so we can do that effectively.
Yeah. Transit-oriented.
I would, I would suggest that staff continue, just by a matter of operations, identifying opportunities for communications on wayfinding.
Yeah.
And certainly we can keep the council up to date on that. Probably will necessitate another, at least, work session update on our work, but we can get to work on that sooner rather than later if you're agreeable to it.
Yeah.
I'm seeing head nods on that.
On wayfinding, yeah.
And
TOD parking requirements?
So two other policy questions for you. Jeff had suggested earlier in the presentation about bringing back TOD parking requirements. That's a lot of fancy language from my perspective to just kind of restate in the heart of the city, taking a look at making sure we have common sense regulations in the area that are informed by data and not necessarily by the theory that maybe we'd used in the past. So if the council is interested in us taking a look at that and bringing that back to the council, I'd be looking for your direction there.
Yes.
So we will
It's a refresher.
We will absolutely do that. Jeff and his team will work with our engineering team, Mark and his folks, and bring back that back to the council. And I apologize for my long-windedness, but one other thing that I heard this evening that at least two of you expressed some interest in, and I think I saw two of you not expressed interest in it, but I don't want to miss it, is the idea of overnight parking restrictions in the heart of the city parking deck. Is that a policy issue that the council wishes to discuss further and would like staff to bring back a discussion for you in a work session on that item?
I think it's a problem.
I think it's a problem, too.
I don't, it's not, it was never built to be a personal overnight parking garage for residents.
For a multi, yeah, for a multi-housing facility.
That's not, that's not why that ramp was built in the first place.
I don't mean to be a smart butt, but you're asking us to review overnight parking to lift it and
Yeah, yeah. No, but you're right.
Yeah, we're talking about on-street in certain areas versus parking deck, parking garage, whatever it might be, parking ramp. Very different.
And I didn't get from that report that that's an issue and Ames Center, who we built it for, is telling us that's not a problem for them either.
I get it. Like, if I was a resident of another building in that area and I saw everybody at the Maven getting free parking while I was paying for parking, I would be
Yeah.
But Brian's saying it's not an issue. I know there's a perception of problems, but I think we should try some of these other things first. Because like the park and ride, I didn't realize it was etched in stone.
Twice.
Twice.
Right.
But to that point, I think if you were coming in to visit here, I would very easily get confused about parking in that ramp. And so I think there's things we could do or try before we jump, jumped into that, in my opinion.
I think you have a three-person majority to table that one to another.
I have my, I have my direction.
Yeah.
And the Maven folks are watching going, yes, free parking.
Three people are saying just park, park that.
Here's the thing.
But I think, I think we need to have better signage. It should change to talk with MBTA. It'd be nickel it.
So.
Ramp, parking ramp. And then some way you can have
People who go to Med Cruz may end up parking overnight and take the Uber ride of shame the next day. And I would like to not discourage that.
They don't really want to meet Tanya's folks.
Right.
They're very pleasant folks.
I approve of that overnight parking and Ubering, so.
So Madam, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I believe that I have our direction. We're going to take three things, it's just a matter of operation, that we will come back to you and keep you updated on. Wayfinding, maintenance and online electronic parking, real-time parking information across our operations.
Yeah.
So we'll keep you updated on those items operationally. I also have three policy, three pieces of policy direction from you that we will, that we'll follow up on executing on the proof of parking for NEON, that conversation, a discussion of overnight parking restrictions, particularly in multifamily areas, and then the TOD parking requirements discussion that Jeff had previously discussed.
Yeah, and on the improved parking ramp maintenance, I think we have a joint powers agreement with MBTA, so you just need to do that operationally.
We do, Madam Mayor, members of the council. That's a great point. Mark has been hard at work among that relationship and we're confident that we can find a path forward to, to make sure that both our staff and our partner staff are working together for great results to the community.
Okay.
Be happy to help that.
Yeah.
With that, JPA, are we obligated to maintain the name of that ramp as a park and ride or do we have flexibility in at least our online naming?
That I don't think is in the joint powers agreement, but I think staff can take a look at that.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Vince, great question. We're looking into it because Mark just mouthed across the room that we're looking into it. So we'll get, we'll get an answer to that question for you and get back to you.
We have a, we have a crackerjack staff and, you know, they, they're boldly leading on all of these things. They're not waiting, yeah. Okay?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Hugo just informed me, too, that staff is meeting with MBTA tomorrow to talk about that shared services agreement.
See, there you go.
So we're already working on it.
Okay, all of that is, yeah, is in the works.
I didn't know we had a joint agreement with MBTA for that ramp.
For the ramp.
Was all that federal grant?
Because I don't think you were here when we built the ramp.
No, it happened before. I did get a very active concerned citizen saying whenever they work traffic, they're an MBN member, no one ever pulls into the ramp. They always pull across the street and park in the service lot of Diamond Head because they
Because since it is park and ride.
That's a park and ride ramp and they're not supposed to park there, just as our president.
A lot of events actually put signs up down by the school for them to park over there.
And I think that's something that we can talk with MBTA about.
Absolutely. We'll review that agreement and I think, again, wayfinding, in my more simple language, signage and just the way we communicate parking is a priority, so we'll look into that and certainly keep you updated along the way.
Should say free parking.
Yep.
I was putting much north ramp, south ramp kind of thing, heart of the city.
Well, no, it's a deck on the north side.
Okay, I stand corrected. North, north deck, south ramp.
Yeah, and then south is a ramp. You know, you have, need a ramp to go up on the north side there, Jack. You either choose the below deck or the above deck.
So if I see a ramp and I didn't say that, I should go to the other lot?
I don't care what you do.
There you go. Thank you. He shouldn't care how I said it either.
I don't care what you do.
We have our direction.
Are you okay with everything now?
We have our direction, we'll get back to you.
Members of the council, I'm going to recess our meeting before we move on to the future funding for police and take a break and then we will be back in, what, 10, 10 minutes?
Sounds great.
10 minutes? Okay, okay. Welcome back, everyone. I will now reconvene our work session and the next item on the work session agenda is the future funding of police staffing assessment. And Chief Tanya Schwartz and our deputy city manager, C. F. Ogen Erody, are presenting this evening, so who's going first, ladies?
I'm starting it off, yeah.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight, we're here to go over some alternatives for funding for the police staffing assessment. Tanya and I will kind of share this presentation, so we'll go back and forth a couple times here on different slides, but I'll start it off. Just some context around police staffing discussions. Police staffing needs have been evaluated a couple of different times or a few different times over the past 18 months, originally in the organizational analysis that was presented in May of 2022. 18 months, originally in the organizational analysis that was presented in May of 2022. More recently, the ACTEL study final report was presented at a work session in September of 2023. And then the 2024 organizational analysis included, included the recommendations from the ACTEL study, and that was presented to council in December of 2023. That 2024 organizational analysis, it identified FTEs in two different priorities, really so we can look at our staffing resources and really effectively use those resources. We identified two different priorities. Future positions that were, needed future study. That means that department requests that needed more data or more study to, before implementation. And then future funding, those positions that have already been informed by a study, but really require funding alternatives and discussion of those alternatives with the council.
And I'll jump in here a little bit, talk about objectives and our considerations. So just to really look at operationally, how could we do this? So Command Staff and I, we really took a focused approach. We looked at operations to look at what can we realistically accomplish in terms of our ability to hire and onboard and train a significant number of officers, really because from determining we want to hire people to posting and onboarding and recruit academies and their field training, that takes quite a bit of time in and of itself, can be up to six months or longer. And then we also looked at our commitment to officer well-being, which is an important priority for us. And so we want to make sure that we're continuing to add to our patrol division, and we're doing that. And then also making sure we're adding officers to support patrol, like we have with our behavioral health unit, community engagement, our CSOs. So just really tried to look at that well-being piece. We also thought about training. So how many officers do we have? How many field training officers do we have to actually train? The amount of officers that we will need in future years, because there's only a limited number of those folks as well. And then, you know, them just having people in their squad cars all the time. So really tried to look at well-being and then just really respect the budget, the process there, the community, and just be fiscally responsible in how we implement staff. And then, yeah, thanks, Jenny. So then staffing recommendations based on all of those operational objectives, how do we meet the needs of the community? How do we make sure we're meeting our calls for service? Want to be mindful of that. What are the community expectations? And then how will we do things differently in Burgsville? Whether that's deployment through patrol, behavioral health, community engagement. So looking at how all of that supports our operations. And then also, as we continue to add staff, we have already added staff. And as we continue to add more, we have to look at span of control and supervision to make sure that we have oversight for our operations as well. So we, we considered that as we went through to look at recommendations for council. And then finally, we discussed retirements, simply because we know we will have some in the coming years, and we have to backfill those positions as they come. So we looked at who's eligible for retirement. That is starting age of 50 years old for police officers. So in the next five years, we have 18 people that would be eligible for retirement. Now, we don't know for sure that every one of them would retire in that timeframe or what years that would happen, but we can reasonably predict that there are going to be some of those. And then 33 really in the next 10 years, so quite a few. So just tried to take in all of those considerations to make sure, like, what can we reasonably do when we're trying to add staff? And then I think Jenny is going to take it from here.
Yep. So here's, here's just an overview of the additional FTEs. We've looked at over the past, past few studies, the org analysis in 2022 recommended 11 and 1/2 FTEs. The ACTEL study recommended an additional 15 FTEs. And that organizational analysis in December of 2023, that OA 2024 column includes that ACTEL study recommendation at additional 15 FTEs. That will be one of the alternatives we'll look at tonight. Additionally, we've got an OA 24 revised, so an org analysis 2024 revised, at an additional nine FTEs. That will be the second alternative we'll review with council. And that's really tonight what the staff recommendation will be as we look at these two alternatives. Alternative one, so over the next five years, this adds an additional 15 FTEs. In 2025, that's three. We've counted on three. And that, those will be in the COPS, COPS grant-funded patrol officers. We also overlaid that COPS grant funding and requirements with this option to make sure we're, we're fulfilling those obligations in terms of the, the FTEs we've added in that area. And so we've included some grant reimbursement as well, an assumption for that. And then it, it goes to two patrol officers in 2026. And in 2027, it adds an officer and a sergeant. Really, as, as Tanya mentioned, we want to make sure that we have appropriate supervision and proper span of control as we add positions. So that really addresses some of that. And then in 2028, we've increased, we've got four FTEs planned in '28, and three patrol officers and a sergeant planned for 2029. So that's a total of 13 patrol officers with two sergeants. In 2026, you can see we, the, the original org analysis called for three each year. But as we kind of talked about operational impacts, and Tanya mentioned it a little bit before, we know that we're probably going to have some retirements, and we're going to need to fill those positions. So we want to kind of leave room for making sure we can appropriately, you know, recruit and train all the, you know, the, the positions that we have to fill, plus these additional positions. Additionally, we know we want to keep up with our evaluation of our staffing. So in 2027, we'll plan to do another, another staffing plan. So it does give us some space to make sure we're, we're doing that. And then it also helps to feather in that increase. So bottom line, assuming no other impacts, just really kind of taking the impact of these positions on what, what kind of levy increases would possibly, possibly be needed in 2025. It doesn't impact the levy with that COPS grant, and we had some other positions we were able to kind of swap out. There's no impact on the levy. In 2026 and 2027, it has a 0.8% impact, moving up to about 1.4 and 1.3 in 2028 and '29. So really, an average about 1.1% increase over those four years at a total cost of about $7.8 million, just about $7.8 million. So that covers alternative one. I'll move on to alternative two. And this, as I mentioned, this is, is what staff is recommending. Again, this does address three COPS grant-funded patrol officers in 2025. In 2026, we don't have plans for additional staffing. Again, we know, we know we are most likely going to have some retirements and things like that. And that gives us space to fully, fully hire, recruit, train staff that we're backfilling, as well as these additional new positions. And then we feathered in one additional officer in 2027, an additional officer in 2028 with a sergeant to be added in that year as well, for a total of two FTEs, and then three patrol officers in 2029. So again, we're looking at those additional officers, as well as additional supervisory roles, and making sure we're, we're addressing that span of control. This, this option for 2025 and 2026, it does not have an impact on the tax levy. And in 2027 through 2029, there's about an average of a 0.8% increase each year that would be needed under this option. Now, again, we've considered this, these additional positions really in a vacuum. You know, we've got a couple of years in terms of funding and things like that. So this, this is just kind of, so we're able to assess what kind of impact each of these alternatives will have. But it's possible, you know, we're going to look at all options in terms of funding and budgets. But this just gives us an idea of the, the level of impact. The total annual cost for this option over the five years is, or total over the five years is for almost $4.5 million. So with those two alternatives, this is just a comparison by year of FTEs that were recommended under the studies we mentioned at the beginning. So that org analysis that was presented in 2022, that would have recommended one additional officer over this next five years, 2025 through 2029. What was presented in December of 2023 recommended the additional 15 officers. And then this revised alternative number two, a total of nine with three, and then zero, and then one, two, and three in those next years.
And Mayor, a point of clarification.
Yeah.
You go back.
Yep.
Because some people may just be tuning in at this point in the evolution of our staffing evaluations and stuff.
Yes.
And might be good to refresh on how many law enforcement were part of the hiring prior to 2025.
Yep.
Because the one in the QA 23 looks a bit unusually like small, especially when you pair it up with a 15. But where were we at? And where have we come to before that one over that five-year period became maybe?
Yep. So I can kind of quickly overview. We added eight additional positions in 2023. And that was that original organizational analysis that was presented in 2022 called for eight additional positions in 2023. And then 2.5, 2.5 in 2024, and then one in 2025. So that's that 11 and 1/2 that was originally presented.
Yep. I just thought it was good to point out that that one was part of an 11 and 1/2 number. We've taken care of 10 and 1/2 from that organizational analysis.
It's just the remainder of what we haven't, what we haven't added from that 11 and 1/2. You're correct. Yep.
Jenny?
Yep.
Actually, this is for our chief. This new plan works for the police department?
Yes.
Okay. Secondly, when I look at your budget there, are you running out of the assumption that we're going to be continuing forward with a non-binding resolution for 7.63 for the next three years?
So the, that, here, I'll go back to this. The zero and the zero does, obviously does fall within that, within that non-binding resolution. That 0.6% in 2027, that I think is the final year of the non-binding commitment. Certainly, that, that is, that is over and above currently what we've got. And we would look at, you know, we're going to have to look at those budgets. A lot can happen between now and then, right? So definitely, we would look at all funding, all options in terms of working it into the budget. But this was just to give us an idea of what additional impact this would have over and above what we've already planned.
Thank you.
Okay. Dan, Kate?
I want to ask a similar question of Chief Schwartz, because that ACTEL study is coming from a very credible place. And I'll share publicly what I said in our meeting. When you hire consultants, they generally don't err to the low side and say, this is what you just need to get by. They really are there to tell us what, in a perfect scenario, this is where you should be optimized, everything optimized and in an optimal situation. And so are you comfortable with all that you know today and all that you have seen happen over the last few years, that nine more officers in this five-year plan is going to meet the needs of the department?
Yes. And we've done a lot of digging into that, I will say. And I think, like any analysis, assessment, you know, staffing is one piece of it. So there's other operational things that we are looking at, how we deploy resources, technology, and things like that to help put that wellness piece into. Because that was specifically what it was for in staffing, was how do we work wellness into the patrol schedule? So that is going to remain our focus. But yes, I do believe we're in a good spot as we look at alternative two, given everything and all of the objectives that I talked about and the considerations. Yes.
One follow-up, if I may.
Yeah.
With the hiring of the 10 and 1/2, let's assume you got all 10 and 1/2 on staff. I'd love to see the half person. I want to know how they get by.
Yes.
Could be like Flat Stanley, the book I read with my grandson, where he got hit by a billboard and he became a flat person. So he's half a person. He loves that story. Anyway, how many of those are, would be visible patrol officers in the community? And I liken it back to Mr. Moran's comment about police presence, right? And that we're, and I made the comment that we're bolstering the department, right? How many of that would, would show up in patrol?
So of the 11 and 1/2, so some of those were, we had civilians in there, too, for the data analyst. That's kind of the half position where that Flat Stanley kind of comes in. But we got, kept a whole position out of that. But I would tell you that of the eight that we looked at, because we had already identified where we thought we needed resources before ACTEL group came in. So two of those are dedicated to patrol, plus we had, so now, and then we'll have the COPS grant, which is going to be one patrol that's going to do patrol and community engagement. We have made other allocations to patrol as well from different positions that we used to have, like with JTTF, or, you know, other positions that we pulled back to patrol to help make sure that we're supporting that position. So then as these go forward, these five will be going to patrol specifically as well. So we are bolstering those. And then I think with this scenario, when we look at another staffing assessment in 2027, will give us an opportunity to say, is this right? And do we need to move forward with more staff? Are we allocating them correctly? And do we have the ability to backfill and hire more in the same years? So.
I think it's, I just want to key in on your point about the wellness issue. One of the things that we don't necessarily always know the inside story on is the, it's talked about, but bring it down to the human-to-human level, the real true impact on stress, anxiety, PTSD claims, et cetera, just what the life of a patrol police officer in the community really looks like and the impact that it really has on them. I think we tend to have a, maybe a historical reference that our heroes in public safety are made of a different fabric than the rest of us, and they can do this kind of job and see the worst of humanity and go home and have dinner and watch a movie with the kids, as if none of that experience really happened. And that's not the real world. They are made of more, but they, they are human, like everybody else, and they carry with them a level of stress and impact of those jobs. And I'm speaking to the fire department as well. And that having a crew get stretched over time, working longer days, not having the ability to have backup or to get some time off to regenerate, right, rest and regenerate. And then you go through a COVID experience, and all that has happened in police, you can just imagine how it was already stressful and okay, barely getting by. And then you stretch it over the period of time that we did with COVID. And this is a great investment to bring reinforcements so they can stay healthy and at their best and not be stressed out. And, and we can obviously lower some, some of those impacts that caused higher PTSD claims and other things when there's violent events happening that they are firsthand and in the line of fire of. Those all just have a traumatic impact. So not only is it more, as you're stating, visible patrol officers in the community, which I think is what is the biggest deterrent of crime, is, is there any law enforcement around? Just look at some of the other cities in Minnesota or around the country where there's been dramatic cuts and/or pullbacks or lack of applications, and the police force has shrunk by 20 or 30%, and the crime has gotten just out of control. And now the police officers that are there are in a no-win situation. I don't know how they can even get through that. So getting back control of our community, having law, law-abiding citizens be able to get some response and help when there is street racing or nefarious activities is critical to the foundation of our success of our city going forward. So I, I think there's all good reasons why. That's why I asked the question, is nine the right number? To do it right and to make sure that we support the officers that are on, on the beat, right?
I do think so. And I think that reevaluation is the key piece as well, as we say, okay, in 2027, we're going to do another. going to do another staffing assessment, and that's going to be our pattern. So we have a pattern to do that, so we don't get how we were before, where we don't have the staffing. And I think when you talk about, you know, visible patrol and getting them into the, getting that into their schedule, that is important. What also has been important is just the overall wellness efforts that we've done as a city and as a police department, so that they have access to people to talk about what they're seeing, what they're going through, what traumatic things. And it always doesn't have to be a big, one big thing. It can be just like the work of a police officer for many, many years, and then something can happen. And so making sure they have those access to that, that it's confidential access, that's available 24/7/365, that the council has invested in total rewards packages and compensation and facilities and all of these things. You know, we have a young department as well and many starting families. And so them taking the time that they need to be, we have many that are out on paternity or maternity leave and so they can do that and have that time and they're not worried. And then because we have enough people and as we continue to grow, it doesn't impact the schedule. So everyone else is always working overtime or whatever that looks like, right? So it's a total kind of wellness platform. And I know Chief here too as well, that's the goal, and that is what we want for, for all of our employees across the city. And so all of these things help that happen. So this is one piece, and all the other pieces are really important too.
And you hit on something, just one final comment, operationalizing the overtime. I think that was used before. We had such significant overtime going on that that tells you something. Year over year, an extremely high level of overtime means you're just understaffed, period, and you're forcing everybody to work longer and longer weeks.
So Chief, one of the things that, when we looked at the org analysis, one of the things that I don't see in these, in this report is that the behavioral health unit, you wanted to add one more person to that unit? And is, was that in a 24 budget that's already approved? So that's not reflected here?
So of the eight, so that we still have one more that will go to behavioral health, but it's reflected in the COPS grant. So the two behavioral health are reflected in there as COPS. And then the third is a patrol slash community engagement. So there will be some visibility in patrol and then supporting community engagement. But that's where those behavioral health are. Yep.
And I really appreciate what's, that you're doing. Because one of the things that I saw in the report that it was asked, what is the worker's comp cost? And that was sent out to all of us. And because of the things that we're doing to help our officers and firefighters, I think, Jenny, that worker's comp has gone down in the last two years.
Yep.
And because the highest reporting was PTSD. And I can imagine what goes on when you're encountering different kinds of events each day. And that's not just for police, but that's for fire. And that's the reason why we have the kinds of care that we have, that we need to model more in police with, with the new building, that fire has. Because if I remember correctly, Chief Youngman, there is a, there are a lot of different health, mental health and behavioral health activities that you have factored into the operations. Hey, to calm them, to help them, to understand what's going on in their lives. And so my hope is that all of these things will be operationalized. Because I've seen already the data that's come back with regard to worker's comp.
Yeah. And I think.
How it was so high and because of the things we're doing in the last two years, it's gone down.
Yes. I was just going to add to your point on behavioral health as we, you know, having staff in that position, in those positions and doing that differently, that is also a support to patrol because they can also call and say, hey, can you help us with this?
Yeah.
We're routing calls differently through Dakota 911. So calls that are not criminal in nature with a mental health crisis are first trying to be routed to social workers and to crisis lines and things like that. And we have that partnership. So those pieces also help support patrol. So it's a combination of all of those things. So yes, we, we definitely look at the wellness piece for future in facilities to make sure, like we're getting those spaces where we can continue long-term, our officers have access to that.
And the nice thing about how we're responding to those calls that are noncriminal is that fire paramedics are involved in that because of the medical aspect of it. And they can triage and also, you know, administer medication if need be. And then another indicator of everything that you're doing are the reports that we get back from the community that you so generously share with us because, but for, not, but for you sharing it, we understand. And it's, it's the phone calls, it's the emails, and also it's the grants for Duke. It was a big one.
Yes.
Because of compassion and care that our offices displayed when they.
Yes.
Arrived at the scene and stayed with the family.
Yes.
Yeah. So, yeah, so tonight, you're asking if the council.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions, comments? Okay. So here's the recommendation. And, and the policy consideration is, do we want to add the nine additional police positions to the city's financial management plan?
Correct.
That's the question.
I was very pleased with this plan and continue to be pleased with this plan. So I will say, I will be the first to say I'm okay with doing such.
Okay.
All up with that? Yep.
Okay. Kara? Okay?
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent. Okay. City manager, chief?
Mayor and council.
Jenny, you have the, the direction.
Mayor and council, I would just say thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
Our, specifically our patrol officers, I believe, have the most difficult job, not, not only in our organization, but I believe in the state and the country. Your investment in the well-being and taking care of our officers and taking care of our staff across the organization, not just to single them out, but there's a lot of hard work that goes on in this organization, but particularly in police, your, your investment in caring for them, I believe we're already seeing have significant impacts in our community. And on behalf certainly of, of our team, I just want you to know how much we appreciate the support that's been invested into our police department. I believe one of the hallmarks of this community and one of our, in our organization is our commitment to safety, and we're really living that out with what's been happening over the course of the past couple of years. So thank you for that. It is, it is one of the best parts of my job to go stand in front of the police department and take questions from them these days. Because we have a lot of difficult stuff going on, there's a lot of difficult things to talk about, but I know that they feel supported and they, and they see the direction of our community, and I can't thank you enough for, for that leadership. So thank you.
It is our pleasure. That's, our job is to make sure that you have the resources and the equipment you need to do your jobs.
So the next time you'll see this, we, we will work to integrate this into our next 10-year financial management plan. That will come before you in March. So believe it or not, we're already well into budget season. So you'll see this again shortly.
Okay. Very good.
I thought it was April last year. You know, March then.
Nudging it up for you.
Yeah. Well, we started, Jenny will say that we started all of this in February, in, oh, January, when you came in and said, here's what we're working on for the budget. Yeah. So it started in January, and we continue, we're always in budget. That's what I tell people.
That's the biggest smile I've ever seen on Jenny.
Is it?
She is like glowing with the thing.
Am I? Okay.
Yeah.
That she's glowing.
Attitude makes the difference.
Yeah. Well, thank you. Thank you, Chief, and Jenny, thank you so much. We'll now move on to the next item, and this is the 2024 strategic priorities and deliverables. Bethany, our strategic initiative director is reporting on this item.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Happy to talk this evening about our 2024 strategic priority deliverables and a few notes on your strategic priorities and their language tonight. And I just want to share some information with you about our deliverables and some, some recommendations, suggestions from staff on the strategic priority language that we'll be bringing before you in the council meeting next week. So really excited to talk about this with you all this evening. The leadership team, as you know, every year, we identify 18 deliverables. So three deliverables in each of council's six strategic priorities, really the most important things that we think operationally we should do to bring your strategic priorities to life for that year. So the, the work here is really about aligning, aligning strategy, right? Aligning our work with the, the direction and the vision of the council and your priorities, bringing those things to life for the community. So that's just a little bit about kind of planning and, and how we look at that throughout the year and the cycle. Where in, in January, the leadership team is really finalizing kind of some our, what our deliverables will be for the year, informed by the conversation at the city council offsite. We discussed those deliverables tonight in a work session and then ask you to affirm them in, in a council meeting in February. And then really, those deliverables are, of course, what we're reporting on all throughout the year to council and the community through our strategic priority monitoring. All of that, of course, can be found on the website under council's vision values and strategic priorities page, and kind of the, the monitoring is on there as well. So we really, again, as a leadership team, do really use these deliverables as the most important things that we are, are working on, sharing, communicating throughout the year towards the strategic priorities. So first, like I mentioned, really informed by conversation with council at the, at the city council offsite and throughout our conversations and our quarterly roundtables and discussions and things like that, as we're thinking about what our deliverables are going to be for the year, we're also talking about just the definitions and kind of just relook at the definitions of each or commitment statements for each strategic priority. So each of yours, of course, six strategic priorities has a, a kind of a commitment statement that's related. And tonight staffer, just wanting to share recommendations on two suggestions for kind of just editing wording a little bit, enhancing the wording on those priorities to reflect kind of conversation with, with council and, and with the team about what might make be the right reflection for the community. So first one is community vibrancy. So what you'll see on my slide is you can see the, the crossed out word is the word we're recommending to, to change. And then the word in bold is, of course, kind of the replacement word, if that makes sense. So currently, the, the definition of community vibrancy says Burnsville is committed to creating places that enhance our community for years to come. And so if you kind of cross out the words we're crossing out and add the new words, it would say Burnsville is committed to creating energy that brings our community to life for years to come. And our idea there was really that in, in when we had a discussion about what vibrancy means and what it looks like in the future, it's a lot about, again, energy, life, that feeling, the experience of the community, something sort of intangible that, that sets Burnsville apart, that makes it unique. And that is our suggestion for kind of enhancing the definition of vibrancy to really reflect kind of what we've heard from you about, about what this commitment really means. So that's our, that's recommendation on vibrancy.
Any?
Any, yes. Certainly any pause or any questions?
On this statement?
I think this is more reflective of the things we've been talking about for the last 12 months, certainly.
You know, I'm sorry. I thought you were done.
I'm going to wait for you to start talking.
Just to make it.
Oh, you sure? Okay.
I just want to.
Well, you can, you can start, Jenny, when I'm done, I guess.
Go.
I, I, when I look at this, I think in Burnsville is committed to creating energy that in my mind would be continues to bring our community to life for years to come. Because I agree with Vince that we've been talking about this for a long time, and we've been doing this for a long time and for years, actually. And so maybe, because right now, the way I read it means like we're going to, we're going to start bringing energy. And I think it'd be good if it's like we can, we're going to continue to bring our community to life for years to come. That's my two cents on that one.
Kara?
I, I like how that's phrased. I'm good with the changes. I like how that's phrased. I do understand what you're saying on the, you know, continues. But I think that's good. I'm happy with that.
Dan?
I love it. From a, from a marketing perspective, the first time I read it, it was like slam dunk, absolutely. I think it's, it's a nice improvement, really nice. And I like the, the actionable words. We're creating energy that brings the community. I mean, it's very definitive. I think it's fantastic.
So the other three boxes that follow safety are the, the deliverables?
Yeah. So I'll get to that in a little bit.
Yeah. Because, yeah. So the statement, the overall statement says that it's committed to continuously creating energy that brings our community to life for years to come. And then I'm always looking at how you're going to continue to, what's the actionable pieces?
Yeah.
So you're going to be talking about the three blocks.
Yeah. So we'll talk about our, yep, we'll talk about our actions and community vibrancy, our deliverables when we get to that, too.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right.
So Mayor and Council, just for an abundance of clarity, our, our process is to bring suggestions to you on these, on the definitions of your strategic priorities, these commitments. I'm hearing unanimous support for the changes the, the leadership team is recommending to you on vibrancy. However, I also heard a suggestion on adding some language, energy that continues to bring our community life for years to come. Mayor, I think I heard you say you were potentially supportive of that. Just want clarity on continues to or not. I think I heard two of you say that you were interested in that.
I think it was, is committed to continuously creating, or I don't, you know, however it, the sentence would read better.
Just want to make sure that I'm following your direction specifically.
What did you all say?
Well, I said that, I said the energy that continues to bring our community to life for years to come.
Energy that continues to bring our community to life. It works both ways.
So, so I've heard that from.
You're right, it does work both ways.
From two of you. I also think I'm hearing three of you say, as it's presented, you're good with it.
You're okay with the word continue?
I mean, I, I think it's assumed, right? We're, we're going to continue to always do these things. But to Dan's point, we're not just starting this now, we have been doing this.
Yeah.
And so that's the, I think the, what Dan's trying to get to.
Yeah. Kara and Dan?
Here to help.
Okay.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
Okay. We will then with vibrancy add the words continue to bring our community to life for years to come.
Continue to.
Okay.
Thank you. And the infrastructure, Burnsville is committed to, again, just looking at what was there before, continue, currently committed to responsible stewardship of resources and lands to ensure access and allow our community to thrive, current. This one, we're really recommending a small change just for simplifying a little bit more plain language, a little bit more simplification. So Burnsville is committed to responsible stewardship of assets, really everything that belongs to the community. Really, that's a little bit more broad, covers everything the community owns. So responsible stewardship of assets to allow our communities to thrive.
That's is better.
What do you think?
I like it, yeah.
Yeah.
It gets, I think it takes out unnecessary verbiage.
Kara?
Yeah. I'm not a fan of assets, but I don't know that there's anything better, so.
Because I looked at that too, Kara, and the other is treasure. But, you know, asset is what it is.
I know. Yeah. There's just, there's just not something that has the same meaning in connotation.
That's right. Asset says to the people what it is.
It might be a little bit.
Yeah. Yeah. And people understand it, it's just not a.
I say thumbs up.
Okay.
I like it.
Vince?
Are you looking for something more touchy feely than assets?
No, Kara was looking for a different word for asset.
I mean, I agree, I agree, asset sounds, is a cold sounding word.
Yeah. But I, I looked to see if there was a different word for it and no. You can say treasure. But that's not, that doesn't, asset is more.
It's an umbrella term that catches everything.
Yeah.
It's everything.
Like an umbrella.
About the ground, below the ground, rolling stock. I mean, you know, assets are, you know, all of the four wheel assets from every department, everything, everything.
Mayor and Council, to affirm this conversation, it is a robust conversation that the leadership team has also had. I would say that generally, we agree that assets sounded kind of cold, so we talked about it a lot. And at the end of the day, landed back on assets because it was most clear and descriptive of really everything that the community owns, right?
Yeah. The people own all of these things. You can't, there is not another word because I looked to see that there was another word and there isn't.
All right.
Thank you. Wonderful, thanks. Those will be, again, on your agenda next week. So then our next, next, just wanted to share with you those 18 things, our most important things, three in each area that staff are working on. Certainly, a number of, to just provide clarity for the leadership team, we always designate a person that's responsible for each one of these so that we make sure that we know that somebody is, is reporting on, the lead, right? And so you'll see there's a name on each one about who's responsible for each particular item. And certainly, some of the folks are here tonight and are welcome to chime in if I have missed anything in any of the areas or if there's questions about any of these. So for, for safety, we're gonna start out, the other thing we did just moving from last year into this year is a number of our deliverables from last year were really not like a one and done specific project, but really an important priority of right work that is ongoing. And so you'll see some of these, if you're, if you're keeping score, some of these are carryovers from last year, just because they're just so, right, like important for us to keep doing. So you'll see our first one there, provide risk reduction programs to promote community safety and health, something that you'll see the fire and police folks are already doing with some community education and a number of programs. And that continues to be a deliverable for us this year. And then, of course, ensuring reliable response to community emergencies is absolutely a priority when it comes to safety. And then our, our last one here is really about wellbeing. So we've talked a lot, this, you all know, together as a team, we've talked a lot about wellbeing in, over the last couple of years. And so we really want to continue to be innovative, find innovative ways to be on the leading edge of wellbeing. And that really encompasses both staff and the community, right? So in the variety of ways we've talked about tonight and for many, many times over the last few years. So when we think about safety, that's for the leadership team, our most important things. Moving to community engagement, a few deliverables for this year, you'll see our first one in community engagement is to implement participatory budgeting pilot program to directly involve the community in the budgeting of their tax dollars. So you all recall that we are, we went through the white paper process, the governance process last year to move forward in a pilot program for participatory budgeting. So we'll be with you again in the next couple of months, talking about what that pilot program will look like and be important part of our work this year in engaging the community. This is also a community survey year, so we're gonna be curious about the needs of our, needs through our community survey and make sure we're over communicating the results. So asking the community for their input and then making sure we're providing, communicating back what we've heard. And then the third deliverable in this area is that we're working on some projects to assess our communications and community engagement functions this year, really to make sure we're understanding how to best reach and connect our community. So what are the types of communications and community engagement activities that we need to be doing, that we should be doing, that the community wants us to be doing, and finding the right ways to fulfill those needs. In organizational culture, right, it's all about creating great experiences in the organization so we can do the same for the community. And our leadership team has been aligned now unanimously for the last two years that the most important thing we're doing is building culture through our managers. And that really comes from, from a place that we know that a manager creates about 70% of each individual employee's experience at work. And so equipping them to be, to be really great at being a manager, at being a coach, at engaging their employees, is, and holding their employees accountable, those things are really important to all of the work that we're doing as an organization for, on behalf of the community. So we also are really focused on positioning our people and our teams to use their strengths every day. We know every person is bringing their unique talents to work and we want to make sure that, that we're providing opportunities for folks to do what they do best, to serve the community with what makes them great. And the third one here in culture is we're gonna be implementing standard operating procedures across the organization. So that really comes out of what the council's heard a little bit about, our corrective action and the work that we're doing to make sure internally that we're, that we're well documented, that we have good, strong procedures and systems in place. And so that's one of the deliverables in culture that you'll see and hear more about throughout the year. Community vibrancy, so you, you heard a little bit about some of these projects earlier in the evening, some important ones that Jeff is working on through supporting economic development in Burnsville, supporting investments in housing. The other deliverable here in vibrancy is understanding our reputation among our neighbors and around the community. So really understanding what Burnsville is known for internally and across our borders and then understand, and then thinking about what we do with that, right? So understanding that, it'll be important part, kind of ties back to some of our community survey and our work in communications and community engagement assessment as well. In infrastructure, a big project this year that we're working on, as you know, is the Police City Hall project. So really reimagining the community experience as we bring that project to life. We're also completing six capital improvement studies right now to understand what we have and the condition it's in. You'll start to see the results in the studies coming back beginning in April. We have, like I mentioned, the six studies that are ongoing currently that we'll start to share with council over the next 18 months. We've also just identified a seventh study that's getting started with all of our horizontal, understanding all of our horizontal infrastructure. And we were even just talking today about, about another one in looking at all of our traffic lights and things like that. So the, the method of kind of like taking those studies and understanding what we have, what condition it is in, to really plan for, right, all of, all of those needs is gonna be important and something that we'll be implementing. And kind of ties into the third deliverable in infrastructure is about really understanding our vulnerabilities and making sure we're mitigating risk across all our infrastructure. So as we're understanding what we have and what condition it's in, it's really about assessing our exposure, making sure that we're prepared, right, that we can prevent harm and in those types of things in our infrastructure. So an important kind of part, those are connected together, so. And then finally, sustainability. So three here, we have promote and protect the city's natural resources. Of course, with sustainability, it's right, committed to environmental innovation that supports environmental, human and financial sustainability. And so looking at the city's natural resources, a very important one, that's a continuation from last year. We're gonna assess, improve and manage how we do our work through process improvement. So similar to standard operating procedures coming out of our work in corrective action, we want to make sure that we understand, just where that we're being the most effective and efficient with our processes. So really helping our, our staff and taking a look at all of the work we're doing to make sure that we're, have the best processes, the most effective. And then finally, sorry, what is our last one is maintain, last but not least, maintain and enhance our budget process. So really focusing on continuing to enhance that process as we go throughout the year. So that is, again, our, our 18, the leadership team's 18 identified deliverables that we'll plan to communicate, share, report on, monitor for you and the community throughout this next year. And I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions or comments? You all are okay with the deliverables?
I think it sums, sums it up perfectly.
Okay.
I like it and I like knowing who's responsible for each one of these.
Yeah. Yep.
And I would echo that and I like the fact that we're studying our horizontal infrastructure. It's like, oh, that's right, there's stuff underground.
Significant, Councilmember.
Yes, massive amounts.
The leadership team has done a great job in, in using a model to understand responsibility and accountability across these major commitments, the most important things that we feel that we're doing in providing, not only providing those deliverables and the action to the community, but, but also monitoring it and making sure that you and the community are well informed across the year. It's one of the six questions that we ask ourselves at least, at least twice a year as the leadership team reaffirms our leadership team playbook. It's all about, the six questions are all about generating the kind of organizational clarity and help that helps us really deliver results to the community in who is doing what. So that's important to us.
Yeah. And it's important for us as well and for the community to know what you're delivering. And then during our quarterly check-in, we'll have, I don't know if you're gonna do it every quarter, but I think probably.
We will.
Are you doing every quarter to see the progress?
Yep.
Just like we did the last quarter when you brought the playbook and we saw the update and all of that and where everything is at in terms of its progression. And then, of course, at the offsite when it was updated. And so with the adoption of these, then you'll have an update on these deliverables at the next quarterly.
The next quarterly.
Check-in?
Yep.
Okay. So at least we understand what your deliverables are going to be, which from my perspective is always very good and allows us to also understand how this informs the budget process as well. Is this going to come before us at a consent agenda item to, to adopt?
Mayor and Council, yes. So on your February 20th consent agenda, you'll see this item and it'll be to adopt the strategic priority language and then to affirm the 2024 deliverables for the leadership team.
Okay, good. So the next step is adoption of this and then we'll see it at the quarterly.
Yep.
The progression.
Thank you.
Okay?
We'll continue to monitor and communicate with the community. Obviously, our community reports, Burnsville in Brief is our monthly reporting mechanism on this. We have our quarterly monitoring reports that are developed for our quarterly roundtables with the council and those are all available both at burnsvillemn.gov/communityreports and slash budget. So two for one.
Yeah.
Several places that people can find.
Always good. Okay. Thank you so much. This is very good. And so we'll go then to the roundtable. Councilmember Keely, I think got the first item on the, well, the only item on the roundtable is yours. And this is, you're asking us to. You're asking us to.
Fund our biggest festival and others. You good? Ready?
You need to say more about that.
I am. I'm just waiting for you to let me have the floor.
You do. That's why I said Councilmember Keely. The first item is yours.
Indulge me for a minute. I want to give you a little background before I bring my ask. Tonight, I bring you a firsthand experience that was highly educational and how a massive citywide festival actually happens. The cost, the demand of over 100 volunteers, the demands of the volunteer board and event chairs to show up for nine months, and for some of the volunteers to carry 100% of the fundraising requirements to put on the city's largest and oldest festival. It puts a huge burden on our local businesses to come up with all of that money. And that grows every single year with inflation. Unfortunately, the last few years, it's been dramatically increasing. What this has done over the last two years has caused me to reflect on the past work, the changes that are happening, the future work that's going to keep this event actually happening, and the trends in volunteering in general and concerns for keeping this type of community scale event sustainable well into the future. The reality is, anything could derail this event from happening. A loss of key volunteers in fundraising, a loss of major businesses that currently are the majority of the reason that we can put the event on. It's conceivable as some long-term massive events held in Minnesota have ended for similar reasons. There's a few examples that I'm sure you can all think of. I acknowledge we enjoy something other cities, not all of the cities necessarily have. We have, except for maybe a Rochester, which has the Thursday part, street party through the summer. We have a pretty robust schedule of events with our four legacy events and our block parties. So I want to just share with you some additional background. City manager Lindberg shared with you today by email, hopefully you had a chance to look at it, some of the staff comparable cities, work that was done a few years ago, that had Apple Valley, Eagan, Woodbury.
Farmington.
Bloomington?
Farmington.
Oh, Farmington, that's right, Farmington, as examples. I called some of our neighboring cities to get a little bit more. Savage to our west and Lakeville to our south. These weren't on that particular comparable, but it added some additional information. And ultimately, it was this work that caused me to come up with what I'm gonna present or propose and request. Lakeville, just so you know, the city funds $50,000 that covers fireworks, facility access, music, porta potties and some other miscellaneous expenses. That is exclusive of all the public safety and public works that they cover, like we do. Keep in mind that it is a multi-day festival, but it's not the only festival that Lakeville funds. Their city also funds an art crawl, an art festival and the taste of Lakeville. They appear to be, to me, a little bit closer to Burnsville from a comparison standpoint because they don't just have a single event. We have Art and All Jazz, we have the International Festival, we have the Burnsville Festival. Savage offers up to $50,000 for a nonprofit-run event, which happens to be open to more events than just Dan Patch. And the dollars are restricted to support fireworks, free music, porta potties, gates and barriers to provide that music. So there's some restrictions on these. Lakeville didn't necessarily state that it's, it's restricted to that, that's what they fund. So when you put that information together with what we learned a few years ago and were refreshed on earlier today, the question before you tonight is whether we want to invest in our city legacy festivals to ensure that they are sustainable over a long period of time. The Burnsville Festival is the biggest. It requires a substantial amount of fundraising to fund putting on that festival. My ask tonight is to better fund this particular festival, well beyond my leadership or my successor's leadership, to ensure that it can survive the long term. And I'm asking the city to provide the same $50,000 and only funding fireworks, free music, porta potties and related, no other expenses. My point here is all about sustainability. I speak on behalf of the long-term sustainability of all of our legacy events, those specifically that rely on substantial fundraising to just put the event on. So I would also ask that we provide for our other two music-based legacy festivals who provide free music, require porta potties and maybe some fencing, that those two festivals, given their size and scale compared to the fire, to the festival, oops, almost slipped, that we provide up to $10,000. that we provide up to $10,000 to go toward free music, porta-potties, for the Art and All That Jazz and the International Festival. They did not come to me and ask for this. I'm proposing it because I know, from what I've learned, that those festivals will face the same kinds of challenges over the years that won the size of the Burnsville Festival, which is a very large four-day festival that draws, we believe, by our counts and estimates, 20,000 people. So it's a different size, scale, and scope, but I think these other two legacy festivals rely on the same thing. There is city support for public safety and public works, but it's incumbent upon sheer everyday citizens to volunteer, to get on the phone, get an email, and raise every single dollar that it takes to put the entire event on. Again, for the festival, it is a ginormously larger scope and scale and size. It is significantly bigger, which makes it even harder when you think about, if you've got to raise, say, for example, our budget is $120,000. Pulling $120,000 out of the community for a four-day event each year is tough. It's not going to get any easier. New businesses aren't coming in. We don't have an Amazon opening up. We don't have Meta putting a facility here. We don't have a casino. We have everyday small businesses who are willing to do whatever they can, but none of them would write a check without a volunteer taking the time to go call on every single one of them. And we call on over 100, as it is right now. So when I looked at all these other cities and what they were doing, I thought, okay, what's wrong with our model? Why is Burnsville in a position where our legacy events, they get and we appreciate the public safety and public support, public works, but why is it that all these other cities use their taxpayer base to put these particular huge events on, and we leave it up 100% to volunteers to step up and do all of that work, and the fundraising, right? These other cities have volunteer groups, that, nonprofit groups, that do the volunteer work, but they're not also asked to do all of the fundraising to be able to put the event on. And so there's some stability, getting some financial support from the city to ensure that not only can they fundraise the rest, but they can focus on just executing the event. That in itself is a massive drain of hundreds of volunteers, just putting it on, let alone getting the money to put it on. So it's a $70,000 annual cost to the city. I think it's justified by many, many examples all around us. I only went south of the river. If I went north of the river, I think they'd all, we'd get very similar answers. This is the way community festivals are supported by their local cities, and I think that's the way Burnsville should do it. I open it up. Thank you.
Okay.
Dan, I've got a question for you. Are you looking for $50,000, $10,000 to be spent how they want to spend it, or receiving invoices and paying up to that amount?
Music, fireworks, if you have it, in your case you wouldn't, and porta-potties. Another, and, you know, if you need, I think the city, we currently provide these legacy events, you know, like fencing, jersey barriers and/or those gates or whatever, you know, the barriers. So that's really not a factor for us. The big thing is, if you're putting on free music, help to put on that free music, because what you're doing is a community interest event, right? You're not charging people to get in to listen to the music, you're funding putting it on. And so I think that's the basis of all these other models that I talk to with these other cities, is if you're going to be, if you're nonprofit, you have to be a local nonprofit. If you're putting on free music, right, we will provide what's necessary, up to a dollar amount, to help you fund that piece. Everything else, you're on your own.
So when it comes to music, are you including production? Do you think about the stage, the lighting, the...
I think naturally that would be part of it, because if you don't have a stage, you can't put on the music, right?
Things you got to kind of clarify.
Yes. Just so everyone knows, the Burnsville Festival spends quite a bit more than $50,000, because we rent a very expensive stage. And we have four nights of music, although the first two are smaller, much smaller scale. But we have two main stage with headliners and warm-up bands, and we have the multicultural stage performers. So we spend a lot on music and, of course, the stage rental. The $50,000 is not going to cover that. I'm using the $50,000 because that's the number that has been established by many other cities, as this is what we believe is the right thing to do. And I think maybe a lot of people coalesced around that, you know, as a few did it, others looked at the model. Savage even commented to me that they built their model after us, that a lot of what they created for their particular festival support for nonprofits was taken from the city of Burnsville's experience and what we do. Even though they set a dollar amount, right, in addition to cover fireworks and music and that kind of stuff, they also provide, you know, public safety and public works along with that.
Thank you.
I've been in fundraising role, I've been in boots-on-the-ground role with the festival since 2015. And it's, as you all are aware, it's a volatile deal, because if Dan hadn't stepped up this year and taken over the reins, I don't know who would have after Tammy stepped down. It's kind of by the, you know, once Dan's done with Art and All That Jazz, I don't know who carries that torch, or...
Ooh, we got people.
Or international fest. So I, I'm supporting this because I think it gives some security to these festivals that are regional draws. People come into Burnsville to experience all three of these things, and I think all three of them benefit the community greatly, for reasons I don't think I need to repeat, because we're all very intimate with all three of these. But I would support it.
Kara?
Do you all believe that this is a driver of, of the, like, like bringing people into Burnsville, from outside of Burnsville?
I believe it. Having, you know, Art and All That Jazz, we bring, we put people in the hotels for sometimes, we're only one day, but we still get people to come up to the Burnsville area for Art and All That Jazz. More importantly, when I think about it, is it brings our community together, and every one of the events we're talking about are different. I mean, some people love going to the Fire Mustard, others don't. Some love coming to Art and All That Jazz, others don't. Some people like going to the International Festival, others don't. But we bring a diverse group of people to all those things. And sometimes it's the same people, they go to all that stuff, plus Party on the Plaza. When you and I were at Rochester, saw what was going on in the streets down there, it was like, how do we do this in Burnsville?
Yeah.
You know, that's how Party on the Plaza got going.
So could this be, could this be funded through the EDA funds?
I don't know. I'd have to discuss that with our...
Through EDA funds?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, let us question that I could answer. I don't have an answer for that tonight.
So, you know, I see that...
Because that seems to be the category that it's in, if I'm being frank on that, is...
So you're saying you're supportive of it?
I'm, I'm supportive of it if it can go through EDA funds. And I, and I know that that's just looking at different buckets of money. However, I think if we're going to fund this type of thing, and we're funding it because we believe it will be a driver of things coming into, into our city, I think the funding is important because of the attitude and the lens we're bringing to it. Does that make sense?
So from my perspective, I'm going to come at it from a different angle. I understand your desire for the city to fund all of this. For me, it goes back to our fiduciary responsibility to the residents and business of the city and the use of property tax dollars. So I want to be transparent in the things that we do. So before we move forward, I just want to make sure that I, we get a legal opinion on what we're doing, because we're using money, and now we're using a lot more. And the other is that I would like Greg and Jenny to understand what is the real cost to us with all of the staff that, that's put into, to the Burnsville Community Festival and Fire Mustard, Art and All That Jazz, and to the International Festival. What is the real cost? That's everything, because we need to be transparent and understand all of that. The other piece that concerns me is privilege. Each of us sit on this.
Not me.
Well, you're an alternate, but you, but the thing is, we all raise money.
Start a soup festival.
I, I raise money, you raise money, you raise money, but when it comes to asking the city for money, we're privileged. No other organization can come in and ask for us to support them in their community event, because we sit here and we're the ones who are also voting on spending this money.
Isn't that our job?
So I want to understand...
I think that's our job, Madam Mayor. We're the only ones that have the authority to do that.
Well, of course, but we're privileged when we want to do these things that have to do with, with festivals, because we all sit on their board.
So are every other city council who's already made a decision to do what I'm asking the council to do for the first time in 44 years. It's never been done in 44 years. For the last 44 years, these other cities have paid this 50 grand for forever. I don't think we have a legal concern. The precedent is set across the entire state of Minnesota with every city that funds their local festivals.
You know, and, and that's okay, and, but I would like to have a legal opinion on it. I want to be transparent to our people with the things that we're doing. We have a fiduciary responsibility, and I think you don't need a decision tonight. Let's get the information that we need. I need a legal, I would like a legal opinion. I would like a real cost on all of this.
We might need a legal opinion for EDA, but we certainly don't need a legal opinion for general fund.
Yeah, we probably do need one for EDA.
Yeah.
You probably need what?
For EDA.
For EDA, but we don't...
For EDA, to see if it can come out of that bucket of money.
I disagree. We don't need a legal opinion on...
And I also want to make sure that everybody really understands the real cost of this. The other thing is that I know, Councilmember Keely, that each time we amend the policy on these, on these legacy events, it's because you have wanted more. We had fireworks on Saturday night, then it went to Friday night, and the city, and it was because it was special, because it was 9/11, and then the city gave $10,000 for...
So are you tying this request to old requests for very specific reasons? I don't understand the context here, Madam Mayor. What do you, what's your point?
My point is that it goes on and on and on. There's always more.
Well, if you just look at what every other city does, we're just catching up to what they've been doing for a long time.
And that's, that's fine.
It's not like we're, I'm asking to break out and cut and ground here.
So let's be transparent and let, and allow all of us, because I don't know how much we spent each year on, on each of these events. I don't, I don't know what that is, and I'd like staff to bring that real cost to all of us, and, and so we know what it is. It is, from my perspective, it is our fiduciary responsibility to understand that. And I'd also like to know the, a legal opinion on all of this, so...
I can tell you, just for the sake of reference, the city of Lakeville spent about $65,000 beyond the 50 grand that was, that was for music.
$65,000 in?
$65,000 in all the other public safety, public works, you know, salaries, et cetera, all the, all the billable city-related type of staff, which we've, I know, we had this discussion a couple of years ago, when we decided to do 100% public safety, public work support for these festivals, that I think City Manager Lindberg had mentioned, it was a real lift to try and track all of that. And I don't know if there was a decision to do that, or if what Madam Mayor is saying is maybe we need to do that.
We need to do that, because one of the things also that I'd like that has not happened, but one of the things is that if these events are going to want city money, one of the things is to share the financials with the city.
Yeah.
What are your financials? Because if you're going to be, so these are the kinds of things that I think is open and transparent. Show your financials. You want money from the city for all of these things, then you need to submit your financial statements, because the, the residents and businesses of the community is paying for all of this stuff, and it needs to be transparent.
I think that's a very good idea.
And it just, share...
Nonprofits have a 990 online anyways. You file taxes, it's all public.
It's all public. But maybe we need to proactively share it.
That may be public, but it's not here where the people of the community hear it.
You know, but I'm just saying it's already published to the, out there for everyone.
Yeah, but then, then let's put it into this realm.
I know, I've been through a lot of these things over the years with Fire Mustard. I mean...
Festival.
Festival, Burnsville. It was Fire Mustard at one time, when we started all this. But if I recall, and I'm sure you'll correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't it in about 2006 or '07, we started paying half of the stuff for the Fire Mustard, because Fire Mustard was paying for everything, after we put Charlie on the board there to kind of, after we'd loaned the Fire Mustard money years ago?
Well, because they...
And that's when it first began, where the city started paying more.
Yeah, they didn't want to disclose any of their, their financials.
Right, but I'm just saying, it got to the point where the city started paying for things that they didn't pay for before to keep that thing sustained. Then eventually, it went to 100%, and then during the recession, it went back to 50% again, and then it was only the last few years it went back up to 100% again. So we've got a lot of experience with funding things within these festivals and that sort of thing, so...
I, I understand, but...
And I, and I agree with you, Mayor. I mean, in the beginning, I was like, what more are we going to ask for? But when you look at some of the things going around the metro area, and just getting our communities together and the vibrancy, you know, it's, some of it makes sense. I mean, and maybe I'm not the one to make the decision, because I run Art and All That Jazz, but it's like...
And I don't disagree with any of the, any of that.
But I'm just saying, we've done this. It's not, this is not new for us that we do things like this.
I don't disagree, but I want it more transparent. We're doing everything in terms of our budget, everything with regard to how our staff handle money, then we should be held to the same and to be accountable with all of that, and to be transparent. It is our fiduciary responsibility. So that's what I would like to do.
I will add, when you talk to people, and I'm sure it's the same at your festivals, I think the vast majority of people think it is a city-hosted event.
They always think it's a city festival.
And they're shocked when they find out that it's not. So I, I think the vast population already believes that it's a city-funded event as it stands now.
They believe their tax money is funding it.
That's, I've never met one person that knew ahead of time that it was funded by fundraising and volunteers.
And we're not 100% funding it, the city. We have corporate partners out there that...
Right, that wouldn't change.
Give us money, and there's grants that are available that we get from time to time. I mean, there's different ways, just like the city finds different ways to find money.
So my hearing you guys, you don't want to understand, you don't want to pause this until we get all of the information?
I think we can move forward as far as, yeah, if everything's good legally, we can move forward with it, but then, and get the opinion. If they come back and say, no, you can't do that, then we can talk about it, but...
Yeah, I think the question for legal is just EDA, it's not the general fund.
I think that's a great...
Completely unnecessary. But EDA, I think it's indicated. We have to know if that's even feasible.
Yeah, that's the one I would have the biggest question on, can you use EDA money for something like that?
Nobody's benefiting from this personally. I know we're on the boards, but I'm not, nobody here is taking any, I think it's more circumstance that we're in the positions we are, but they are truly community events.
Take the 1,000 hours that I put in the last couple of years, each, 2,000 the first year. I didn't get paid a penny. I do this because I love this community, and I'm donating my time, along with over 100 other people.
Yeah.
other people. Some of them put in five hundred hours a year.
I do the same thing, Dan.
Exactly.
I do the same thing and raise the money.
This is not a a request for ourselves. It's a request to keep our events happening because when you leave and when I leave and when Dan leaves, someone else is going to have to take it over, whether they're on this council or not. And how are they going to survive?
You know, Dan, the the all of these festivals have survived by volunteers and also raising money. In this day of transparency, I just want to I I I want to make sure that we are transparent and we're doing our fiduciary responsibility to the community.
I have no I a hundred percent support that. I have no problem with that. That's not what I'm arguing.
Yeah.
Or or take an exception with. I take exception with asking a legal opinion to do what every other city's done and we have done already. I think that's unnecessary. EDA, I think that's a hundred percent necessary, providing proactively our financials, more than happy to do that. It's an open book anyway, right? So no, no problem.
That's easy enough.
And I want and I want staff to bring back how much it the total cost. So everybody knows they you might say, yeah, oh, you tax statement, but they're not going to go look at that, but they they watch us on TV, and I want that to be transparent.
So Mayor, members of the council, I'm I'm here in your direction tonight to bring this item and policy, related policy, back to the council for discussion.
Yep.
We will absolutely do that. I I would be.
Total cost.
If if that's ascertainable.
So the the council did provide direction in twenty twenty-two to provide basic city services. Councilmember Keely recalls that conversation correctly. One of the things that staff had recommended at the time was if we're going to provide basic city services, it it would make sense to be efficient and effective with the use of staff resources and not have to overly track to the degree of billing legacy events back for fifty percent of those services. So we absolutely can provide, Madam Mayor, the context of the investment that the city has made. We have talented finance staff and directors for a reason. We can certainly provide that context, but we did the council's direction did alleviate some administrative burden, so nevertheless, we can answer the question, but Councilmember Keely recalls that correctly. Two things that I would suggest for the council, I absolutely have heard your conversation tonight about legal opinion or not. I have a responsibility to the to the to the council and the community and our financial position. I do think it's important to get legal opinion on public purpose.
Well, good, okay.
So and I've already had some of those conversations with our legal counsel. It's not it's not an overly complicated conversation. I do believe things like fireworks, as an example, are a public purpose expenditure. Actually, the state auditor has an opinion that directs that directly addresses that question. Staff can bring that information back to inform your conversation. I'd be remiss also not to to just suggest to the council that the conversation around conflict of interest, when we have board members and board chairs who are also serving as elected officials, I think it's important for us from a from a process perspective to to acknowledge appearance questions. And certainly, that's something that we would be aware of in our responsibility to you, my responsibility to you, and our responsibility collectively to the community. So so certainly something that that we take seriously. But I have my direction here tonight to bring this item back. We have a policy that that addresses our commitment to legacy events very specifically, so we'll have to make some adjustments to that. I think the council might need a little bit more opportunity to consider the information we put in front of you and then provide us direction on that policy, again, in an effort not to make things overly complicated, but to make sure that we capture your direction and your your the outcome that you're looking to achieve effectively.
And I'd like with the consent of my colleagues is that every year, if we're going to be each of the festivals, who's going to be a beneficiary of city funds every year, whatever that is, also submit their financials.
That's easy.
And again, I would just ask the council for some flexibility as staff looks at making the administration of this and our transparency with the community as effective as possible. So if you're agreeable to it, I'd like to bring some of those thoughts back to you for your direction and consideration.
Sure.
And then we can put a gag order on talking about festivals for a few years.
Yes, that's the simple way of of saying exactly what I'm saying.
We're in a work session. We have the authority to vote if we want to. I don't have any problem with bringing this back.
I I'd like to bring it back. I just want transparency. We're we're doing a lot of that in the last two years. Let's make sure that everything that we do, especially when it has to do with our fiduciary responsibility as elected officials, that we do that. And 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 from my perspective, it's also our ethical and moral duty to do that as well.
Well, heard. When you were saying something about, you know, having finance pull some numbers together, I just noticed that the glow had sort of worn off. There it's back, aren't it? Good. Just wanted to get it back, right?
Do you want to redo a couple of slides now?
So so I under I'm I'm hearing that nobody is opposing that when you when you look at amending this policy because I think there was a place that I read, and it might have been a past policy that says, but we never never executed it, that financials were supposed to be shared. And I probably that was back when Charlie was the.
Yeah, that was a long time ago. By the way.
Charlie was actually chair of the Firemuster when he suggested that we do this.
Yeah, the I noticed.
And so we need to we need to execute that.
Some years ago, I had suggested we do a tier one, tier two because of the scope and size and scale of the the legacy events. And ultimately, what what was rewritten is each one is line itemed with exactly what support it gets. And so each one can be enhanced individually because like the Heart of the City race doesn't receive what the International Festival receives or the Art and All That Jazz or the Festival, right? So instead of having tiers, it was really specified by event. And it's I think it's written. I read through it very carefully.
Yeah.
Again.
So.
And realized that it was actually structured to be able to be enhanced without like rewriting the whole thing.
So anyway, yeah.
Point of clarification here. If this were to go through and say three sixty communities came before us and said, we want to throw a parking lot party, they would they would be eligible to receive up to certain dollars.
No, this is legacy festivals only. I did point out in my in my comments that Savage, the way they structured theirs, Dan Patch Days is one, but it's open to any nonprofit, local and savage, that wanted to put on a festival with live music, eating porta potties and gating, they would support that. So they kind of created a structure to open it up to others that wanted to come in and take advantage of it. We don't have that in Burnsville. I believe we only have the legacy festivals. Then we have others other festivals that require some other documentation.
But if they're a community event that comes to us, it has to be held in our parks. It can be in their own.
If this fails, Firemuster could move to Savage and take advantage of that.
Yeah, good.
You've got to leave our fire department here, though.
Dan Patches.
That's not a threat. I was just thinking out loud, but.
Lighten it up a little bit.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, to Councilmember Workman's question, the procedure of this policy does specify an application process for city legacy events, so certainly the question is open, but would have to meet the criteria of your policy. If you don't mind, and again, I don't want to get ahead of the council, that's not my it's not my intention at all, this is going to require some staff work, so we'll take your direction tonight. If you're agreeable to it, I would suggest that staff at least put together some redline revisions. There are a couple of administrative things in this policy that need to be addressed that maybe were missed in the past. So part of our work could be providing you with a a redline version of this policy to address what's been asked tonight and to address some of the administrative changes to then get that back to you on a work session agenda as soon as we possibly can.
Are we all looking at the six twenty-two policy?
Could we target March for this because planning for these events in the fall has begun already and just would like to work get the work done sooner than later. April was okay. I mean, it just I'm just saying, is is March feasible or is April better?
Mayor, members of the council, I will do everything that I possibly can to make this happen in March. I need to talk with our team a little bit about the just about time workload, but I I think it would be reasonable on a fast pace to potentially get it back to you in in March.
Well, and I'll I'll just follow it up with, I'm hearing three and a half of us supporting this, so I I think it's now a procedural thing and then a final vote, obviously, but there's consensus support by three and a half of us to move forward with this.
Is that half working out?
Yeah, the other, the EDA half.
You have to put the half of the half of the FTA with the police.
Right, then you got to hold.
Well, and and Councilmember Keely, to your to your point, it's the council's prerogative to for a majority of you to give me direction to simply amend the policy and put it in front of you at a council meeting. So that that is also an option here, so I'm open to your direction.
I hope that my colleagues will be open to getting for us to be doing our fiduciary responsibility and getting all of the information we need. How much does how much is this really costing us?
We should get information back from Jared pretty quick. That shouldn't take him time. That shouldn't take Jared much time to get back to us.
I just don't want to unnecessarily prolong this process. We're not talking about a million dollars here. We're we're really talking about something that we already do. We already support these festivals. We're changing that support and enhancing it. That's it. I I don't know that we need to to drag it out.
I'm happy to wait for Greg's feedback.
Thank you. Thank you.
Or feedback's probably not the right word, but.
Both.
Deets.
Kara, you said?
Yes, agreed.
Wait for the information?
Yes, Greg is going to get us the information and.
Okay.
And he'll do it as quickly as possible.
It's not going to take long for that.
Greg's staying in his office till three o'clock this morning.
He already does that.
Three, say, wait for the information.
What I'm hearing from the council on this item is to bring this back to you in the March work March work session with a revised policy and the information that was requested tonight or.
And March work session is actually going to be the end of the month.
The end of March, March twenty eighth?
Correct. Because of NLC.
Yeah.
Extra time.
Is that?
It's going to be a full work session.
Yes, it'll be an exciting one, too. That's fine. I think it's a is it the fourth week of March?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so.
You're good.
Yeah, six weeks. That gives you more time, actually.
Okay.
Okay.
Is it clear?
I'm agreeing.
I have my direction.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I'll get mine next. Page.
You have your direction. Okay.
Do you have anything?
No.
Okay, Vince, you have anything to report?
Some of us went watched BJ speak at the MLC Legislative Breakfast. I don't think we've had a work session since the twelfth. He did a fantastic job presenting, I think, me and Dan.
MLC Breakfast.
Yeah.
Wait, who I don't remember who else was there. Anyways, he did a great job, the chief edina, fire chief, and it was a very good event. Former Sergeant Witty spoke about public safety things, and it's one of my favorite events to go to. Other than that, I really have no other updates.
Okay.
Experience Burnsville, we have a meeting this Thursday, our board meeting. We're in the testing phase of the new website. It's getting set to launch in about two weeks, so heads up on that one. Amy Burrell and Nicole Sabenia from Mercury Creative will be here next week presenting their destination plan and budget for us. And then I want to give some kudos out to our fire department. Experience Burnsville, Better Business Real, the Chamber of Commerce, and SCORE hosted their first Be Informed series at Fire Station One, and I heard it was quite a success and had about twenty people that were very well engaged. And thank you, BJ, for what you guys did and all that. That was important. I don't know what the next one in this series is yet, but I'll I'll have that information probably by Thursday, so.
And then, of course, Amy did her quarterly report.
Yeah, we have a report down there.
Okay, Kara?
No.
Okay. Dan?
Thank you. I've got five quick things. MBTA and STA still having some fun with Met Council. If you all remember, the twenty twenty-three transportation bill had funding for microtransit and Suburban Transit Association bus funding to continue to provide services for those folks who are transit dependent in the suburbs, MBTA being the largest. And we're not getting the funding that we were. We're getting a lot of a lot of a lot of delay and a lot of, oh, we're talking, we're talking, we're talking. But so fortunately, Chair Hornstein, who was the author of our microtransit bill in that transportation bill, attended I thirty-five solutions last Thursday. So thanks to the MBTA staff working on a quick turnaround, I think same day, not only did I get to talk to our legislators about this problem, on Tuesday night, when we met last week, one or two of them got to Chair Hornstein before I got to him at seven thirty AM on Thursday morning because he said, I heard about this, and I shared the same information with him. He shared a story of his visit to Iceland for vacation, and he found out that Iceland has a Department of Accountability, and it's made up of the board of folks who are chaired by the opposing party. The minority party has the chairship of the accountability group or committee agency that keeps the legislature and where the money goes accountable. That was that had a lot of that resonated with with Representative Hornstein when he found out that his transportation bill was not being acted upon the way it was supposed to and getting funds where it belonged from the Met Council. And he said, he promised me that this session is going to be about making sure things go where they're supposed to. So we appreciated his support. Chamber of Commerce Public Policy Committee met on Friday, discussed legislative priorities, planning events. One of them was a session later this summer related to recruiting volunteers for commissions for city, school district, et cetera, and of course, candidates, people who from the chamber's perspective, regardless of party, would be supportive of business initiatives. And we have a person in our midst who is going to be a featured speaker at that event, Councilmember Schultz, with her experience as a national recruiter. So very happy to have the city council represented with Councilmember Schultz's skill set going to hopefully help these folks convince them to get involved.
Are they pursuing all local elected seats, including school board?
Yeah, yeah, it'll it's basically across the board. It's getting people involved and recruiting, getting people interested, whether it's a volunteer commission or elected office. Our first virtual festival board meeting is this Thursday. The NLC TIS, our first meeting was in January, and it was my honor to take the gavel, and I was able to invite our MBTA Executive Director Luther Widener and our Director of Development, Matt Faiton, who we actually got from Southwest Transit, and he was one of the innovators of microtransit with Southwest Prime. Southwest Prime, he now works for MBTA. We brought him on last year. They presented to our Transportation Infrastructure Federal Ag of Advocacy Committee, microtransit, how it's been how it got started, how it's grown, and the challenges for keeping it to grow, vehicles and funding. We have members of our MBTA service area in Scott County, Savage and Prior Lake and Shakopee. They are begging us every month, when are we going to get microtransit expanded over there? We can't get vehicles and we can't get the funding thanks to the Met Council. So it's a challenge, but we're going to do it as quick as possible. It continues to grow faster than we can catch it. We did get six Dodge Ram twenty-five hundred vans ordered, and they are only going to replace vehicles that are extraordinarily way past their lifespan and costing us an arm and a leg for maintenance. They won't allow us. They won't allow us to actually grow the service yet, so we're always, uh, trying to get more vehicles. Getting cutaways and even vans has been a significant, a significant challenge. So anyway, the legislative session started on Monday. There were four hundred bills, I think three hundred and fifty to four hundred bills introduced on Friday before the actual first day of session. And, uh, it's gonna be a, a fun legislative session this year. That's it, thank you.
Most of, we haven't met for MLC. I think that's coming up. You reported on the MLC breakfast, that BJ, so that's it. And then the other thing is that, um, with the International Festival, we're starting planning and, um, raising funds. So we've started that activity. And we also had our meeting on January twenty-second with the City of Savage that we meet, uh, quarterly on. And, uh, uh, the topics that were of relevance is County Road sixteen update, fiber contractors, they wanted to know what we're doing. And, um, Greg reported on that. They also wanted to know if we've started, uh, to look at any policy with regard to marijuana in public space, in public places. And I, we said we haven't touched that at all. They also talked about, we want, we also talked about school resource officers. And what's gonna happen, we're all savage and us, waiting for the legislature to act on, on the amendments to the bill that they passed last time. Uh, we also talked about and introduced our new Public Works Director, the water treatment plant. I think Hugo gave a report on that. Uh, and, um, the Highway thirteen corridor project and the landfill update. So we reported on the things that, uh, we have here. So that was all, and, uh, I don't have anything else. Greg, anything else from staff?
Nothing from staff, Mayor.
Okay. With that, if there's nothing else, we stand adjourned by acclamation.